So I have not gotten a statement to get five years. Which I am quite proud of because at one point I was a single point away from losing my license.
Dr. Chase.
Present, here.
Ms. Gary is not present, Ms. Hosted.
Hi, I'm here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Ms. Seaman is not present, Ms. Dr. Warner.
Here.
Madam Chair, you do have a form.
And the others are on their way.
Right.
Alright, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of quick comments before I kick this over to Chris and the rest of the team to talk about our budget proposal. I want to draw your attention to a couple of the documents that you received on Tuesday night as well as re-received today. And our goal here was to hopefully meet and exceed your expectations in terms of what you'd asked for. There was a request for the summary that was created last year and in previous years that you're used to seeing, as well as an update to that, and Chris has provided that. But we added two new documents that are really kind of the focus of what we want to share. One is a public executive summary that's helpful for the public when we go to Budget Town Halls to get their heads wrapped around what our budget proposal looks like. And the other is our budget broken up into four parts that we're proposing to the Board for consideration. The first part being our revenue picture, the second part being our non-discretionary expenditures, and our third part being our discretionary expenditures, and the last part being items that didn't make the cut. And the items that didn't make the cut are potential enhancements, and these are budget topics for the future and things for us to talk about. They are an overestimation of our needs. In truth, in Week Seven, I cannot tell you precisely what exactly we need because I'm not done evaluating our status as a school district to know enough to tell you precisely what our needs are. I do have some ideas, I've shared those with the Board. And I've definitely taken into consideration all of the recommendations from our staff, which you can see are voluminous. And this is what our staff believes would make Stafford County Public Schools a better place. Many of them I agree with, many of them I don't. But we're going to spend a good portion of the next three hundred and sixty or so days making that assessment so that our fiscal twenty-four budget is a five-year plan that brings us into fiscal twenty-nine with some recommendations on how we might parse this out responsibly over the next couple of years, the things that do land in making our school system a better place. So with that, we have a lot to talk about. Very excited about some of the innovations that Chris has put in place this year to start celebrating and sharing with you as we go through the budget.
Maureen.
I know, but she doesn't have any papers. We need a packet for her.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Oh, okay. Madam Chair, can I ask a question real quick to Dr. Jones?
Sure, but before you do that, I just noticed we have a approval of the agenda. Can we motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Dr. Chase.
That's it.
Ms. Randall, okay, call in favor.
Aye.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Claus.
So just so that I understand the perspective I'm looking at, this, right? These are, these two boxes here are, we're not really looking at these right today now.
Correct.
So if there's a surplus, not that there's ever a surplus in the book, but should we have leftover funds, we're not looking to pull these in right now. This is just our wish list.
If you had leftover funds, I would ask that the Board look at revisiting some of these items, and we have some priorities that we'd like to highlight today. But the budget that I'm presenting to the Board for consideration right now is balanced based on projected revenue.
And can I, can I add, so, but this is our budget?
Right.
And it's our budget request.
Yeah.
So for me, there may be a few things on here that I'm going to ask the Board to consider adding to the budget request.
Oh, cool, okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Fulmer.
Or you could ask to take things away.
Away, right, okay.
Either way.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for joining me on a beautiful morning. So, we have a lot to cover, but we do have a few hours. I know we don't want to be here all day, so.
We will finish on time.
Yes, I am gonna move quickly, but at a pace that I think everyone is comfortable with. If I'm moving too quickly or talking too quickly, just say, hey, Chris, calm it down a little bit, let's spend some more time here. Why, we like these work session environments, a little bit more interactive. So, the first thing I wanted to show you is we discussed with the Fab C, kind of gave not even a preview of what I'm about to show you, but just when we first started moving towards a virtual budget book. So trying to get a little bit more interactive and make it accessible on the web a little bit easier instead of a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty-page PDF budget book. So, we are very close to going live with the superintendent's budget book. We're not quite there yet on the virtual side. So, I'm gonna show you some previews of that, and then by the middle of next week, I'll say we'll send you the link where it's completely live and on the website. We'll post it on the web. Sandra is ready to go with a banner on the front page that links directly to this. So I'm just gonna kind of show you a behind-the-scenes right now of what that's gonna look like to help you navigate it once it is live, so there's no confusion. So, once it's on the page, when you click on it, you're gonna come into, kind of ignore the gibberish over here and concentrate on the right-hand side that I'm scrolling through. The setup is very similar to the old hard copy budget book, but all of these are interactive links, and so you can click on them. Some of these are just gonna take you straight to the website where the school board information would be. You know, here's an org chart. Letter from Dr. Taylor, similar approach to what we've had in the past, directly linking to the budget presentation, the documents that we had presented to you on Tuesday evening. We have a school operating budget summary. And what's cool, and I'm gonna actually go more to the expenditure side and show you a few areas because it's a little bit clearer. So this is interactive, where if you want to see, that's not the best. State funds is a better one to drill down in because you'll see each of our state categories with our actuals, our last year budget, current year budget, and our variances. There is a pie chart for each area, and then you can actually change it to see what that pie chart looks like for the prior ones or the actuals. So a very interactive budget book. We are very excited about it, and it'll be the same on all of our expenditures as well. So you'll see, these are our main categories that we have in the budget book, that's the state that we call function codes, main categories. So, within transportation, you can drill down and see what are the areas within transportation. And speaking of that, I'm gonna actually, I'm gonna show you this really quick just so you can see that our proposed teacher scale is on there. But, I'm gonna jump into the expenditure side of transportation. It'll start with the summary of, this is all of our transportation departments, which are the function codes that go to the state. Within each of these, you can drill down, see what makes up our total salary and wage line. The different benefits, FICA, our VRS retirement, health benefits, and this is just transportation. Once again, here's the pie chart that you can scroll. If you want to, you can also, you know, if you want to see it instead of a pie chart, you know, or not a pie chart, you want a graph or a line chart, you can make those changes. This is all live, so citizens will be able to access the website.
Oh, good.
And do all of this on their own.
When we hand out our handouts at the town halls, or is this information is somewhere for those? I would assume handouts, right?
It's, it didn't make this particular handout because it wasn't up and live at the time that we printed and presented your budget, but the revised version, we absolutely can draw people's attention to that.
And did you say this, so this is, I don't know, the beta version, right? Is that what you say when you're in?
Yeah, so it's.
And we're not. God, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is ninety-nine percent done, there's a few tweaks, and then we gotta post it live to the website.
And, I'm sorry, when did you say that it was coming live to the website?
Tuesday or Wednesday, by the middle of the week.
Oh, it's fast.
It'll be live when we do our Budget Town Halls, then?
Yeah, when it's the first town hall.
The first one's actually on Monday, so it'll be by probably the third one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the difference is producing a budget book in the summertime that's printed or having one right now.
So, as you scroll down through our transportation expenditure section, we'll have a, I call, it's a possum is what we call it for short, it's our position summary. You'll see the categories here, you'll see for drivers that we add nineteen drivers, and that was identified in the budget presentation for growth. Fifteen to move towards fixing our transportation and our tier model. We also have a communication specialist that we want to add to transportation to help facilitate the communication and improve that to our parents. You'll also, as you scroll down, you'll see what the notable changes are. So when you, when you're up here and you, you see, alright, we have a, you know, a twenty-three percent increase in contracted salaries. You know, you'll know that that's, you know, for our service scale, we did a five percent across the board, and that was for bus drivers. The other thing that we did for our bus drivers is we did the mid-year adjustment. Let's see, this is why, this is actually the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So that's one of the changes we're going through and double checking before we make this go live. We did an investment of one point four or five million dollars into our bus driver scale in August to improve the starting pay and recruit drivers. Worked phenomenally, so kudos to the Board for helping us make that happen. So any of the big changes, so we have fuel increase. We're estimating additional fuel and the cost of fuel. We need another hundred thousand dollars to bring that up to one point three million dollars total for fuel.
And Chris, can I just ask, is that increase in fuel also taking in consideration increase in bus fleet?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Susan, increase in bus what?
Fleet.
Fleet, oh, sorry, okay.
Yeah, and expanding the bus fleet doesn't necessarily use up more fuel, but more students, more miles, you know, are, so in essence, yes.
Okay.
I don't want to overcomplicate it.
Yeah, thank you.
We have twelve buses in this budget, total buses. That's not an increase from the prior year, but you'll see an increase in the cost of the buses, which is why you'll see a total increase in our vehicle replacement line for buses. One of the things that was on the Board agenda last week and on the Board agenda for our next meeting is to use some of our carryover money, our reserve fund over at the county to go ahead and purchase twenty-three buses. Buses are significantly delayed. I'll personally apologize for that, even though there's nothing I can do about it. I wish we could get them every day, it's like gut-wrenching that, you know, we check in and it's pushed back a little bit farther. You know, we're looking, if we're really lucky, six months, but really maybe nine months. Even if we order them now, we're looking at October and November to get these buses. So waiting until July to order them basically means we'll order them for the next school year.
And I'll just add this too, is that the buses that we were expecting, and I'm just clarifying, the buses we were expecting at the end of January are still not here.
Correct, they, our updated timeline is now end of February.
Oh.
Yeah. And these are ones that should have been here like in October.
It's like dealing with a contractor, it'll be two weeks.
Yeah. These are ones we were expecting October.
We used to be able to get buses, and, yeah, Ms. Claus.
Well, I was just curious, when you mentioned something, it made me, it made me wonder. A total purchase of twelve new buses, but you said something about last year. So do you, is it every year about twelve buses purchased?
Yeah, so, so in the prior year budget, we had twelve buses. Really, we need to be in the fifteen to twenty category and get there and stay there. Originally, we had that in the budget, but you'll see that we're requesting the twenty-three buses now. Really, that was eight buses that we were gonna include in this budget. Let's go ahead and order them now so we don't have to wait so long to get them. So we'll leave the twelve that were in there, and we'll order those first week of July. But we want to go and order the twenty-three now, and that's to help facilitate us to expand our fleet so we can move towards a more on-time model for bus transportation and for growth.
So a school system of this size typically, when buses arrive at a normal rate, you're doing about twelve to twenty buses a year, every year?
Probably more of like fifteen to twenty, even eighteen to twenty, I would say.
Yeah.
Is what we need to do each year.
And then, when we're adding buses to the fleet, obviously buses are coming out of the fleet. At what rate is that? Like if you're adding.
Ten percent, is that what?
Ten percent is a good rule of thumb.
Ten percent of our total fleet?
Yeah, if you can think about it this way. Think about it like ten years or two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand miles. The buses get a lot of mileage on them, for sure.
Right, right, right.
So it's like whatever happens first.
Diesel more than gas?
Ten years or two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand miles.
Does diesel do better than gas for our mileage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so, if, if ten percent of our buses, and we're at two hun, you know, two hundred something buses, are we just literally one-to-one-ing, or are we definitely growing our fleet?
We're, we're growing.
Okay.
So we've been holding on to some of our buses longer than we even like to right now because we can't afford.
Right.
So sometimes, we'd have to do an engine replacement on a bus. Depending on, if it's already got two hundred and twenty thousand miles, we're probably not gonna put a new engine on a bus. We're gonna just, you know, sell at an auction and we're gonna replace that bus, or we'll work it in, a new bus into the fleet. Right now, because our, we're waiting on forty-two buses and want to order another twenty-three, we can't afford to start disposing of buses.
Okay.
Because actually, we have, right now, more drivers than we do buses. So we need to expand that fleet. It's a good problem to have right now, we can't.
We're waiting for forty-two buses at the moment?
Yeah.
Well, that includes the twenty-three we haven't approved yet.
Yes.
Correct, that does not include the twenty-three.
It's gonna be a little.
Yeah, no, he says it does include the twenty-three.
It does not include, so we'll have sixty-seven buses?
So they had sixty-five buses.
Yeah, now that's over the next year because those forty-two should be coming in the next couple months. Those twenty-three aren't gonna come for another nine.
Isn't that like twenty-five percent of our fleet?
Yeah, no, we haven't, so we're trying to catch up, yeah.
Well, what, sometimes we, in the past, if we had a lot of money at the end of the year, we would use it to buy buses.
Right.
So there was one year, and I don't know if it was two thousand and five, but one year we bought a ton of buses.
Fifty.
And, and when we bought those buses, they all have the same expected lifespan. So, you know, there's some years that there's a bump that we need to replace more.
We're probably seventy-eight.
Than seven million in some other years.
And I, I will say, Kiva, Mr. Baldwin, and Mr. Jeter, our fleet director, are working very closely, especially as we're able to expand and get these new buses, you know, coming up with a very detailed schedule of not running a single bus two hundred and fifty thousand miles straight. Once it gets to a certain mileage, you rotate it and you make it your spare bus, and it ultimately extends the life of your buses. So, instead of having a spare bus sitting there with ten thousand miles on it or whatever that only comes in when one breaks down, a very methodical way of rotating those buses in. So it's not the same bus doing the longest route every day. You know, we have to rotate those in, and so, really, kudos to them. I appreciate them taking a look at that and making sure we're getting the best use of those buses.
And can I just also ask?
Yeah.
For the new buses that we're getting, are, is it, again, I know typically when we order buses, and this is also for the benefit of new employees, new Board members, but are we still doing half gasoline, half diesel?
Yes, so, for the order that we're gonna be doing, the twenty-three buses that we're requesting at the next meeting on action, those are a mix of diesel and gas.
Okay.
The, honestly, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the twelve that are in the budget. I don't even know if Kiva's gotten that far, they're evaluating that.
What they need, okay, okay.
I'm sure, I'm sure they do know, but I just don't know offhand what those twelve would be.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
And it could be, it's gonna be a mix of sped buses and mainstream.
Okay, oh, yeah, okay.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna jump just to one more section. This is operations and maintenance, so you'll see very similar setup. You can drill down on each one of these. It's gonna have the graph, it'll have our positions, and then the notable changes for operations and maintenance. Now, so, this mains tab is gonna have all of our O and M categories in one section, but then you can still click on individual section, and that's gonna take you into just those numbers, which are a breakdown of that main O and M section. So these numbers are gonna be smaller, they all roll up into the main one. And then if there's any changes in that category specifically, those notable changes will be mentioned. All of our schools and their school site allocations, information is loaded on here as well. So this is the allocation that Moncur would get specifically. Right now, in this budget is, their increase is only allocated there for growth. One of the things that you'll see in our handbooks, which we'll touch on later, working with Dr. Taylor and coming up with a, a model that actually allocates funds to our schools based on the makeup and demographics of that school, their special education numbers, their poverty, you know, free and reduced numbers.
You wanna switch over and show?
Yeah, you all, you wanna go and see that now?
Yeah.
So to clarify, this is not, this is a lot of information, I know.
Wow.
Yeah. You'll see each of our schools, each will, will receive a base allocation, and then based on the number of students they have in certain categories, they would receive a supplemental allocation amount.
Could we get a copy of that document, just because it would be easier to read?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So just to talk through this, Chris, do mine.
No, go ahead.
Just to talk through this a little bit, this is something that I implemented in a previous district that shall remain nameless. And we, we always wanted to account for some of the challenges that some of our schools face that some may have more active PTOs than others, and account for some of the other augmented services that we want to be able to provide to our students with disabilities, our English language learners, students that are living in poverty, and also to account for some of the activities that they experience. So for example, at the elementary level, let's take a couple of examples. Let's go with Kate Waller Barrett and.
Harper?
Okay, because they're right next to each other. Both have about almost eight hundred-ish kids. One has sixty percent free lunch, the other has twenty percent free lunch ballpark. And that equates to about four hundred and fifty-three students living in poverty versus a hundred and forty students living in poverty. One has pretty equitable students with disabilities, one has ninety-one students with disabilities, the other one has seventy-six. And English language learners, one has fifty-six English language learners versus the other one having three hundred and thirty-six English language learners. We give every school, like we have been doing, a base amount of one hundred and sixty-five dollars per student to run your school, principal. This is what you get per student to run your school. Very successful model.
Clarify, that base model of one sixty-five is higher than our current base for some schools, so.
Okay. We want to augment that by giving a little extra, okay? We want to give five dollars additional per student at the elementary level just to do some extra activity work. You want to have a special event at your school, we want to give you a little bit of extra funds. Can you highlight Kate Waller Barrett's line for me, just so that I can see it?
Yeah, if you can, lose, I can see, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, very good. You know, it's, it's pretty much the same because they have similar student population. But when we get to economically disadvantaged students, we want to give them a little bit of extra money that's proportionate to the number of students that they have that are economically disadvantaged. Special education, they were pretty close, ELL, they weren't. So a little extra money to support English language learning support. And so the total difference, it's not too-too much difference, but a little extra money to give them a little extra lift for some of their challenged populations. That's kind of the genesis of mine.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So when you say, I get the one sixty-five per student, that five dollars for activity, is that conditional money? Like, they can't, is it supplies only, is it a field trip, is it, like, how does that work? And then, is, is that also per student, and the twenty-five is per student? Okay.
So, the short version of this is that this did not land in our budget as a funded initiative. This would be an enhancement that we haven't landed.
Okay.
Okay? We would write some controls that we would want the principals to adhere to because they would be getting a little extra money. So just on the base, they'd be getting one twenty-six versus one forty-eight. Now Kate Waller Barrett has about forty fewer students, but would get just a little bit more money than Brent, but both schools get more money. See what I'm saying?
Yep, yep.
So no matter what, schools are getting more money, the question is how much and why?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, and I guess my, I think when you talked about this in the Fab, I said if we did this, I would really like at the end of the first year for principals to tell us how they spent the money.
Yeah.
And what results they, what it, what it did.
But again, this is not a funded initiative at this point.
So this is, this is an enhancement at this point, and what's the total cost for that enhancement?
It's one point three five million.
This is kind of highlights, this is what they're actually receiving in the budget request. This is with the initiative, the additional funds that they receive.
So if you scroll down a little bit, Chris. So middle school, instead of a five-dollar activity bonus, it's a fifteen-dollar activity bonus. And for high school, which has a lot going on, a thirty-five-dollar activity bonus. What we're hoping to do, should this eventually land in your budget at some point, whether it's this year, next year, or in a future year, is we want to, we want to establish a model that we can add to over time where the dollars can be correlated to return on investment in a meaningful way. But what we would also like to do is like, we'd like to spare the wallet of our parents. Think about it, the first week of school. Or the teachers, yeah.
Teachers, well, the teachers.
The first week of school, you get one, one of two things. The first thing that you get is this stack of papers that you have to sign as a parent, and they ask you for your address forty-seven times. Here's the funny thing, we know what your address is, we just need to stop that silliness.
Thank you.
Okay, that's on us, okay?
Okay, one fill-in.
Alright, that's, that's a hundred percent on us, okay? So we're gonna stop that silliness this year. And the second thing that you get asked for is four rolls of toilet paper, five bottles of hand sanitizer, a box of pencils, some Kleenex.
Ziploc bags.
Ziploc bags and everything else, okay? So we need to stop that silliness too. And we're hoping that a little bit of this money will help to go to defray the silliness. And, you know, if we really do believe in free and appropriate public education for our kids, then this really needs to be something that gets considered in, in the long run so that teachers aren't breaking their own bank, because they don't have any money anyway, to augment what their classroom looks like, that we should be able to cover that in the principal's office, and that we need to give principals the tools to do that. And that parents shouldn't be nickelled and dying to send their kids to school. And so that's the progeny behind us. Thanks, Chris.
You know what I like about that chart, it shows us the differences in schools in the population and the different student groups.
Yeah, that's why I'd really like a hard copy of it.
Yeah, I would, I'd like a hard copy of that, too.
So that was the gist of our virtual budget books. I'm not gonna go through every line because we would be here until ten o'clock tonight, and I know nobody wants to, and you'll have that opportunity as soon as we post it live and we clean up a few more things. So, really excited about that. I think it's gonna make it a little bit more seamless to move around and get information out of the budget book and see it in a, in a good summary format. So.
With the budget book, can you, if you wanted to, if you're looking at a particular page, can you print that page or save it as a PDF or something like that?
Yeah, sure, now it might not be the cleanest. We've done it, you mean, it comes out, it's gonna be, it might be like two pages, it's gonna be stretched out a little bit, but it should be legible.
Okay, I was just curious.
I know that we have some paper-intensive friends in the, in the community that this will be a little bit of a switch.
I like it, though.
Yeah.
But the interactivity should be a bonus for everybody.
Actually, it should make it easier to find stuff.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because when you're actually going through the binder, it's, it's pretty tedious.
Well, I'm not gonna lie, I mean, the graphs for me in terms of proportionate are such a help. Because I'm just.
And I like having the notable changes that the board attached to it. I know they were in the book before, but it was always sometimes looking at that in small print and going up, yeah.
And we're trying to, I'm trying to expand on that a little bit more this year and really show those details. And even as we go from the superintendent's budget book to the school board's approved budget, we'll be expanding and even adding more to the page. Usually, the superintendent's budget book is, is a little bit smaller, condensed, yeah, great word, because it only exists for about three weeks, so.
Right.
And it's just the operating budget, and then we, and then we have some, the more information we share with you before the school board approves.
And they have killed so many trees printing those damn things out.
Yeah.
I think I have three of last year's.
Yeah.
Various forms, which I think, which is sad.
Yeah, so, we're, we're getting rid of this.
Thank you.
And, and going to that, but really, your tabs and everything, you know, you'll see on here, there's a transportation tab, it's gonna have that same information.
Right.
That you see there, it's just gonna be where you drill down.
I'm assuming there'll be a printed copy somewhere, so if we ever just, we're like, hey, can I stop by and see your printed copy?
No.
Darn. Okay.
Well, we should have a printed copy at the libraries. Do we not, do we not put this stuff at the libraries?
Not anymore because they can access it like from our website.
Oh, they're not open, they're not open now.
But they're also.
But we used to.
Yeah, but because they're putting everything online, I think if that's.
Yeah, but there may be some people that want that paper copy. So if someone really, you know, asks for it, we would be able to provide that, could we not?
We would, yeah.
You know, just, just at the community.
Yeah, it's not going to be as clean and pretty as this, but we can print, you know, page by page.
Well, just so we don't say no more printed, I mean, if, if there's somebody that desperately wants one.
Doubtful.
So.
Some older people.
If somebody wants a printed copy of their budget book to peruse, then they've got a very boring life.
But you know what, there's a lot, there's some people that just don't do electronics.
I don't even like going through my budget, through my taxes, through my economics.
So Dr. Taylor mentioned that we provided you attached to this agenda, attached to on Tuesday evening's agenda, the prior year format that we've used, and then also the new summary format that just actually gives you more detail, breaks it down a little bit more. So I'm going to kind of go through this, you know, line by line per se. We'll probably spend a little bit more time on the ones with more dollars and will need a little bit more explanation. So just starting on, on the revenue side. This is total revenue, we know what the increases were on the side. And so for our state revenue is a total increase of twenty-one, twenty-four point, uh, four million dollars in total state increase. That's, that's a big number, so it's about a twelve percent increase over the prior year. That's attributed to growth, it's attributed to the state doing very well right now, they have a surplus in the current year. Looking at increasing the state funding going forward. That includes a five percent, the state's share of SOQ positions of a five percent salary increase, which is not the full cost of a five percent salary increase. I think everybody is familiar with that by now.
Do our new people know about that?
I know I gave an overview.
Yeah. Specifically because.
Yeah.
What's the difference of our staff, say our teaching staff, the SOQ versus our total teaching staff, so we can get a.
Roughly probably fifty percent. I do, I did that math, I just don't have it off the top of my head, I do have it, but I can get it.
So that means fifty percent of the five percent is covered? Is covered.
Well, they only, it's fifty percent of our staff, but then we only get sixty-five percent of the cost of that increase because the state has a local composite index, they expect the local side to cover the other thirty-five percent.
So that makes it more like a third.
Yeah, of what they're actually funding, yes.
So our SOQs are only about fifty percent of our state aid?
Yeah, roughly, don't quote me on it, I can get you the exact number, because I've done the math, I just don't have it right off the top of my head.
Well, it's significant because if, if the state is funding one-third of our increase, then that means we're, we, we the local are funding the other two-thirds.
Some people don't get that because they're like, well, young kids just gave our teachers five percent, why are, like, and they don't understand the math, and that's why I asked the question.
And that's the biannual, so it's really just two and a half percent.
So in this, in this state budget, it's five and five.
It is five and five, correct.
Totally agree, this is good next year.
Yeah.
Except, except if the board chooses to adopt the salary scale that we proposed, we would make a tweak to the bottom which would send a ripple effect up the scale. So that, you know, it would be an average of five percent or close to that, not a flat five percent.
In the second year.
Yeah, the problem, yeah, the problem with adding the flat percentages is you create the problem that we're trying to fix.
Correct.
Which is the, the compression in the salaries.
So twenty-four million dollars roughly in additional state aid. We're also projecting an eight million dollar increase in our, our local transfer. That wasn't a number we pulled out of thin air, we think that's going to be very close to what the county administrator presents. Even in his five-year budget presentation he did recently to the board of supervisors, he didn't specifically say how much each year. But over the five years was roughly, I think forty-five million dollars that he had in that budget presentation. So we're really close to what we think the county administrator is going to present to the board supervisors. No changes in our federal revenue or our, our local. And by local, these are like kind of our miscellaneous revenues, it could be rebates that we receive from, we participate in a, in a P-card rebate program, so all of our schools make, our staff departments use P-carts when we can to make our large purchases, and then we get, you know, it's roughly two percent back on every purchase. We have a, a contract with Staples that if we buy our supplies from them, we get a percentage back on each purchase. It's through the, some state contracts. So like our, our P-card rebate is roughly three hundred thousand dollars a year that we receive and just in refunds that we can then turn around and reinvest into the budget.
So when we, when we auction our buses, do we get that too?
Uh, we do, and it stays in our fee fund, it's not very much that we get from a fifteen or twenty-year-old bus.
So it's not like land where we would have to.
Yeah, yeah.
What is not very much, I'm just curious?
Ten thousand dollars, you know, per bus.
Three hundred and forty million, ten thousand is not very much.
Yeah.
Three hundred and forty million unfortunately is not.
In my household, that would be lovely, but in the school system it's.
So with, and we, we had this in the prior year, so it's not an increase, but we assume a rolling forward a million dollars in savings each year into the following year. So in FY twenty-two, the first million dollars we have in savings would roll into our capital reserve fund of the county, and they would reallocate that back to us. As normal operating expenditures. So our total revenue is projected at just under three hundred and seventy-four million dollars.
Do you even get a ten percent increase from the state or the county?
Expenditure side.
Less than one percent.
A little bit. And you guys do have this as a, as a hard copy in front of you, but. So we have a total prior year budget expenditure of three hundred and forty-one point five million. The first thing we showed is what were the decreases to that we identified right off the bat, where were the savings? So first one is we had debt service related to our ERP capital lease, our financial system that we did a capital lease on five or seven years ago, that expired, we make our last payment like this June. So there is no debt service for next year. So that's three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars almost in savings right off the bat. I'm going to come back to this next one, reductions in base, so that's where individual departments that went down in budget or identified savings across their departments on things that were in the initial base budget. And here's a, a big one, looking at reducing our textbook budget by a little over a million dollars.
Can I just ask this, so reduction in base, is that staffing or is that things?
No, that's just department materials and supplies, it could be software, things that they determine we do not need.
That's a lot, that's almost half a million dollars.
Yeah, now that's across the entire division.
Well, that's a central office reduction.
Yeah, yes.
But not.
Schools.
Is that, that's just.
No, not schools.
Madam Chair, can I interject for just a quick second?
I'm trying to understand that.
I'm hoping that this helps to build trust across the street because every year we've been adding to the base and not revisiting some of the base. In future years, we will be revisiting the base every year to determine what we need and what we don't need so that we are, are more attuned to living within our, our, our means. And really focusing on what, what we need to do and what materials and supplies we need to serve schools better.
Yeah.
Schools do not exist to serve central office, central office exists to serve principals. Principals exist to serve teachers, and teachers exist to serve students. And that's really the focus that we want to take. And so there are some things that we can do without, and that's what we're hoping on trimming out of the base so that we can focus more on what our schools need, not necessarily what we need as a school system centrally.
I was just curious because I, that's, that's impressive.
Yep.
There was a lot of technology money that came in with.
True.
Well, I've never seen that before.
So.
That's good.
Every year, we have school members, you know, when we purchase textbooks, they ask about textbooks.
Yes.
Why are we still moving towards spending roughly three million, four million, five million dollars a year in textbooks? We are revisiting that strategy, and we're looking at, this is not a full decrease in textbooks, we're not going to do that all in one year, but it's looking at kind of phasing that in. So the first year, we have a, it's a little under three million, I think two point eight million dollars in our total textbook budget. Reducing that by about a million dollars in, in this first year. And that's, you know, the goal is to better utilize some online resources, digital resources that are available to teachers, there's still going to be a.
And they prefer.
Yeah.
They do prefer.
So Chris, can I interject?
Yeah.
And I'll be quiet from here on out.
Yeah, whenever you want.
Okay. For a school system twice our size that may or may not be in suburban Richmond, they are operating with a textbook budget of three quarters of a million dollars, not four million dollars.
Wow.
Okay?
Oh, wow.
And you need to know philosophically, I think that children need to read books.
Right.
With pages that they turn, and they need to have the tactile reading experience. I'm not advocating that we get rid of all textbooks or that we get rid of books. But there are smarter ways that we can manage this money, and that's what we're doing.
So that leads me to a question, which is what do we currently do with the textbooks every year? Because aren't they, they're tied to specific curriculums, correct? That they're doing, so, I mean, each year is, like in, in college, when I kept my book forever, or, I mean, I'm sorry, when I sold it back, versus even in high school, and they were like, clearly, you're done, leave your book on the desk, it's for next year's kids. So how, how do we currently do this, manage our textbooks?
It's about the same.
It's about the same.
Mm-hmm.
So, so we're utilizing, is it a three-year cycle, a five-year cycle for one textbook, or is it just a pack?
Probably seven plus.
Seven plus, yeah. And, and many of our textbooks are out of date the second that they're printed.
Correct.
And they are underutilized by a lot of our teachers.
Yes.
And a lot of our teachers are accessing open educational resources which are free. And they're opening, and they're utilizing a lot of their own teacher-created materials which are free and are actually work product of the school system, by the way.
And some of the programs that they do pay for is, is money that they could actually go to their administration and clearly now ask for.
That's exactly right.
So this is an advantage of having the Chromebooks.
It is.
Because before we had, every child was a Chromebook, we didn't have that option of, well, you might have in the textbooks.
Chromebooks aren't free, they have been the last couple of years, but we're going to end up, while the textbook line is going down, we are probably going to see the technology line go up in.
A little bit.
A little bit.
Yeah.
But are we concerned though that, I mean, we, I've heard from several parents that the concern is that the text, the technology is teaching the kids, not the teachers. So where's that balance? Because, you know, I mean, I'm all about technology, and these kids are going to live in it, but at the end of the day, like, I don't want the teachers to feel like they have the only choice but to go to the tech, the technology as well. Technology and textbook are too close together.
I, I went to, I, I had that question a couple of years ago, and I went to Grafton Elementary School and asked, the principal showed me, took me into classrooms and showed me how, what was actually happening.
Okay.
And I would recommend doing that yourself.
Just going and seeing how they're utilizing it.
And seeing how, how is technology used in a classroom? And, and it was going to vary depending on the teacher's skills, but I was very impressed.
Okay, cool.
And it's also why we're not zeroing out textbooks.
Correct, no, I get, yeah, 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 yeah.
A reduction, not a zeroing out.
They're also able to access like up-to-date information, like when I went to Montour and they were doing, the teacher's still teaching the class, but she's guiding them on the Chromebook to look for resources to do their projects.
To do, yeah.
So it's not, it's not, here, here's the Chromebook, have at it.
Right.
It's a very interactive process, and then she's circulating and going to each student and saying, okay, what did you find? Tell me what you would do next, and so it's a very interactive process.
Well, and I feel like it's harder to step out of the mindset that I'm in, just having it been virtual for so long, right? Like that whole visual feeling I have of just kids with a, with a Chromebook trying to do assignments.
Right.
So I, I agree, I probably, I mean, I would like to see it at all age levels too because I know the skill set and the comfortability with technology also impacts how much they can or cannot do with it.
Yeah, and even when I taught chemistry, a lot of times you could introduce students to something online so they could see an experiment that you couldn't necessarily do in the classroom.
And then bring it to life.
And then, yes, so.
But they still, instead of turning their textbook page, you go back to their Chrome, right, to double check this.
Same thing.
My question on this was like, these, the.
Still need the teacher.
The workbooks at the elementary level, is this, are we going to, so.
I saw workbooks on, on Thursday.
Right, and I get them back at the end of the year, you know, even pre-COVID, when they clean out their desks and dump all that stuff in the backpack and send it home. And I'm shocked at how little they actually use them.
Oh, they were using them.
And.
It depends a lot on the teacher, yeah.
So, like, for me, it's like, and especially during COVID, when they just sent the book home, like, they can't turn them in, so why are we buying them? So that was one thing I was kind of like, I wonder how much these cost, because these obviously aren't reusable because you need them every year for each student, because they're a workbook, you rip the pages out and.
I guess the question is, do we want them to have the graph, the writing skills or not, right? Like, if you want somebody to actually.
Well, I feel like, you know, the teacher-created resources might be better, like as far as, uh, you know, if they're only using fifty percent of the workbooks, you know?
Gotcha, gotcha, yep.
Oh, and as Dr., as Dr. Taylor mentioned, we're, we're not completely eliminating the textbook budget, and we'll probably never completely eliminate the textbook budget, we're going to have some classes that require a textbook, whether that's like a, and I'm, I'm not knowledgeable in this area, but I'll throw out a few that, you know, IB or AP or dual enrollment, you know, there might be some that are required. And, and so we'll have to look at those and always probably maintain a physical, you know, two-hundred-page textbook. And then there will always be some other supplemental resources, but.
I just appreciate savings on that idea.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So it gets through our, you know, total baseline budgets, really what it does is bring down that prior year budget to a new starting base of three hundred and thirty-six million dollars, and then we look at adding our increases on top of that. We broke it up into two categories, non-discretionary and discretionary. As explained in the presentation, our non-discretionary are the items that, if you want to just continue next year the same way we are this year with six hundred plus more kids, these are the things that we need to have. And we are a growing school division, and inflation, you know, cost of, you know, utilities and fuel and everything, they cost more money, healthcare costs, and so we'll go through a couple of these big ones and, and jump down. So first of all, you know, projecting from current year to next year, six hundred and nine new students. Not overly complicated, but when you look at a budget book, the budget, state budget's based on ADM. And actually made me think of something I wanted to touch on, our state budget.
Because when you say, when you use these acronyms, can you?
Yes.
Average daily membership.
Refresh, refresh the older and enlighten the newer.
So when I say enrollment, that's our true number of kids we have on usually September thirtieth. We always use September thirtieth as our enrollment count for that year. We had some kids, we lose some kids during the year. The state uses what's called is an average daily membership, so they take all those pluses and minuses. There can be a kid that was only here for three months of the year. They're going to give us like a, they're going to count our ADM as a, that student as a fraction. If a kid's here the full year, they count it as one, half the year, a point five. So we could have a enrollment number, our ADM number is usually a little bit lower, the way the state does their calculation. So our enrollment might be thirty thousand, six hundred and fifteen, six hundred and nine. What actually the state is going to fund us on is going to be closer to like thirty thousand, five hundred. So in the budget book, you'll see budgeted ADM, and you're going to see last year's budgeted ADM, which was, I think, twenty-nine, eight forty-five, and then this year is going to be thirty thousand, five hundred, or whatever, you're going to see that increase. That's not the number of kids we're expecting, we try to break that out and show that in the budget book. When we do staffing and everything, we looked at true enrollment on September thirtieth. Knowing that it's going to fluctuate during the year, we actually usually add during the year. But we also add part-time kids, so we could have a kid that's only in school part of the day, or we have kids that graduate middle of the year, so the state doesn't count them as a full-time student, so that ADM number is always a few ticks lower than our total number of students.
I, I just have a newbie question, I think, just in terms of determining six oh nine. Is that based on the number of housing complexes that are coming in, or just, like, where does that number, it's really, six oh nine is really specific.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not like, are you the numbers guy, like, really, really drilling into that, yeah, so how is that?
He does work problems.
So we have the.
Don't talk, we'll talk later.
So we have, we have, we do a projection for every school, oh, actually, ten years out.
Okay.
And.
Lying on those.
Yeah, yeah. It, it's based on growth, it looks at our cohort progression, which is basically, when we project who's going to be at Rodney Thompson, well, we need to know how many kids from fifth graders are at Whiny Creek that are going to go to Rodney Thompson, so you got to look at that progression.
Right.
We could have a bigger twelfth grade class than we do a kindergarten class coming, or vice versa. Typically what we see is bigger kindergarten classes because we could have two thousand kids born five years ago, but then we have kids moving in. So if two thousand kids are born today, we're probably going to have twenty-two hundred kids start kindergarten in five. So if two thousand kids are born today, we're probably gonna have twenty-two hundred kids start kindergarten in five years.
You do this all the time?
It does.
And you enjoy it, don't try to.
He does an amazing job.
I can see the joy.
If you go to his office and for redistricting, Sarah Biden, he can literally blow up the street and tell you how many kids are in each house that are in their schools, and if you wanna know if they're in elementary, middle, and high, he can tell you that too.
I'm fascinated, I'm not, terrified.
There's a lot that goes into that and we're usually pretty close. Now, is it, there's no way to be exact there. I think it's within like, what is the margin error usually?
County-wide, one percent, school for school, five percent, which is reasonable. You want, you'll never be perfect, you just wanna be within a reasonable range so that you can do good planning.
Yeah. I'm fascinated.
And just so you know, his daughter's doing this, studying this in North Carolina, so when he retires. Have I not claimed that?
It's a legacy, it's a legacy, I love it, it's a legacy.
Nice to her.
Yeah.
I claimed her, I claimed her.
So we have sixty FTEs total, twenty teachers, and we have some special education and four bus drivers that roll into that sixty FTEs. That has a total cost of about three point six million dollars. This school-based funding, so that's our school site allocation, that is just for the number of students. That is not anything to do with the enhancement that we were talking about a few minutes ago. That would be on top of that if we wanted to implement that model. We've actually already started like over the last few years, taking a classroom here, a classroom there at the Phoenix Center. And so that, these costs have been going up, so it's still just the first floor at Phoenix Center and two or three classrooms on the second floor.
Yeah.
But some of that was done at the beginning of this year because of their growth and needs. It was just a few thousand dollars here, there, it's starting to add up.
And they're already on the waiting list there?
Yeah. We have one paraprofessional in the budget for dual-language immersion program and that's at Wide Water Elementary School. They started that, I think, this year staying and they wanna, I can't speak to it in a lot of detail, but is everyone kinda familiar with?
They actually, there was such a, that's such a, first of all, I love Karen Bingle, but.
Yeah.
She brought in a lot of the teachers from the foreign recruitment program and so she's got a really strong base of teachers to help build on this dual.
Can I just ask though, didn't we have a dual immersion program or dual language immersion? Well, I thought it was at Moncur and at Conway.
So they were doing like an after-school.
After-school.
Program? And this is actually like an immersion within the classroom.
Okay.
It's how we got delayed because of COVID.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But this is a great program, but, you know, we only limit it to, you know, one or two schools at a time and, and I would like Dr. Taylor at some point in the future, not this year, next year, but that we look at, you know, the, the potential for offering this in more of our schools. Because Hampton Oaks started out as a quote pilot program and they had it for probably at least ten years. And it was great, kids would, in, in that school would go through a lottery process to be able to get into that program. And they had, one of their classes was always taught in Spanish, so when those kids got out, you know, they were pretty good Spanish speakers and then we continued it at HH Pool. Now, I'm, I'm assuming it's, it's been discontinued now, but it, I think it's wonderful it's in Wide Water, but I would like to, you know, evaluate it and see if it's something that could be spread, because I think there would be an interest in many schools.
And I'm curious as to why Water, Wide Water was picked.
Because she has a high concentration of, of Spanish-speaking teachers.
I understand, but more than any other school? Like, I'm, that's what I'm saying is I don't know why that.
That I don't know, but I know that she has.
What was the criterion for choosing Wide Water is what I, I guess I should be more specific.
I, I, I'm.
Yeah, I don't think it came to the board for approval.
Or is this a different program? Because I thought I read.
I think it's the kindergarten groups moving on to first grade, but you have to, it's not just one grade.
Cause I read about it recently.
You have to keep adding, so it'll be like a pair of, you know, a year to keep that as it moves up each grade level.
When I read the summary on it, it was just because they said Wide Water already had like the staff and the population and that it was basically easier to take what they would normally already have and create a dual-language program based on their projected enrollments for English language learners, you know, staff that could handle the bilingual education.
So we're not adding Wide Water to a group of elementary schools that are already doing this, we're kinda going back, instituting this in, okay, just wanna make sure.
Yeah, it's starting, it's starting out as a pilot at Wide Water to see how it goes the first few years.
But it has been around before.
A pilot assumes that we're gonna be reviewing it and evaluating it and looking to expand it. And I would love to see that, because that never happened to Hampton Oaks. I can tell you, it was at Hampton Oaks and it never got evaluated, it, it never stopped. It was a fantastic program, but nobody else had that opportunity. So all I'm asking is that we, you know, we, we look at it and we, and we say, is this something that we can offer, you know, in other schools?
And it's great that we're doing it.
And it's so be equitable in how we, you know, make that determination, because I don't think that came to the board for approval, at least I don't remember.
But I also think it depends on the school, because some schools may not be interested in that type of dual-language or immersion program. They may want something else. So I, I think that there is, you know, if you look at all of our schools, they all have their own individual personality.
Right, with seventeen schools, I guarantee you, there's several that would be very interested in a program like that, that's all.
It is not just an elementary school program or it is just.
Right now, it is just elementary. But I would not be surprised to see it maybe expanded to like Shirley Heim, because they also have a high concentration of ESOL students, they also have a diverse teaching group that could maybe manage that, so I wouldn't be surprised to see it move up, but I think.
It followed the students with, with Hampton Oaks, it followed the students to HH Pool.
All right, so we have some instructional supplies, just due to growth and some actuals, it's only seventy-two thousand dollars. When we get into compensation for bus drivers, that's the one point four five that we added mid-year. So that's not additional compensation for them, that was the mid-year adjustment we did for bus drivers.
So we carry it up.
And also keeping that recruitment incentive in there for assigning bonus for drivers. As we need to add growth and expand our bus drivers and our fleet, we need to continue to recruit, so that's like a non-stop process. And we don't wanna take away those incentives that have worked beautifully this year. I mentioned before, we, since the beginning of the school year, we've hired sixty new drivers that are out on the road driving, which is like unheard of. I can tell you that no other division, our size or smaller or probably even bigger, has hired sixty drivers. And so those are working and that got the beginning pay up to twenty-two and then we're, you know, our current drivers will receive that five percent increase.
I'm sorry, Chris, what was the pay before?
Seventeen dollars an hour.
It was in the teens, okay, cool, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on our workers' comp or health there, health benefits increased, because when I get to the other funds, I'll touch on those in a little bit more detail. We do have, I will say, a common theme right now. We have gone on like two or three years of pandemic years, which don't look like normal years when it comes to compensation and benefits. That comes to hourly, our substitute, so if you go back to March of twenty twenty, so FY twenty, we didn't see, you know, we didn't really have a full year of substitutes, a full year of, of hourly wages and driving, so we only had, you know, seventy-five percent of that school year, so when I look back at our actuals, they don't tell me a whole lot when I look at that full year. If I look at last year, you know, we were half in, half out, or, you know, was that, that model? So we didn't have as many substitute wages, we didn't have as many hourly, we didn't have, we weren't using as much fuel and those were savings that, you know, we went over last year for the returning board members. So we tried to look at our actuals and we tried to look at where we were at for this year for our hourly and substitutes and tried to adjust those based on that. And we are continuing to grow, so we're gonna see some increases there, you know. So about eight hundred, about five hundred for our hourly and substitutes. You'll see down below where we have an additional fund that we're putting into our substitute wages to address the premium day incentive that was on the, that was in Dr. Taylor's presentation. We added the warehouse lease that, that was about a seventy thousand dollar increase. That's not, you know, we expanded some space because of all the shuffling we're doing with furniture and as we get new furniture in, we have like no storage in our schools, because our schools are packed to, every little nook and cranny is being used for a pull-out space. So we have the warehouse space as we get new furniture in and then we have maintenance delivered to our schools. But we also have a nice little training area in that facility now that we can use for bus driver training, because we are capped out and restricted because of the size of the training area that we have down, transportation. So really excited for that, we've already kicked that lease off, we moved a lot of furniture and stuff in there and we're getting that training room ready for Mr. Baldwin to use very soon for our, our next class to go through driver training. A few things that we get into them are gonna be, you know, we're really getting into what our, you know, cost of living, our increases in, in contracts due to inflation. So we know that we're gonna, we had a, actually, a very favorable contract for our copiers. We are bidding that out again, we expect, just because once again for growth and replacing machines, the cost of machines are gonna go up, projecting an increase in our copier contract. We have about ten thousand dollars, we pay roughly forty thousand dollars to the Ralph Center to use their pool for our swimming practices.
May I ask why, if we have a, oh, I mean, like, I just mentioned this the other day. In two thousand and six, we have a signed agreement with Parks and Rec and, but I know in two thousand and six, we didn't have Ralph Center and we didn't have Embry Mill and we didn't have Chichester Park. So, but we, I thought we had a reciprocal agreement that that wouldn't happen, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, so the Ralph Center is independently managed, so the county has like delegated that out, delegated it to a private company that manages all of it, so they can't cut us deals, they treat us like every other customer. We at least try to get.
They could, but they don't choose to.
Yeah. But we don't have an agreement with the county to get a reduced rate at Embry Mill, is the way I should word that. We would have to work with Embry Mill directly, which, or the Ralph Center.
Ruffin, yeah.
Directly, which we do. Right now, it's a struggle just to actually get lane time in the pools and, and to work into our schedule.
And meats, yeah.
Really, and maintenance is where we see a big increase, this is like our cleaning contract, it's a projected increase of about six percent of a lot of our projects.
Is that because we're doing it differently or is that just because of the cost of it?
That's just the cost.
Okay.
Yeah. We're just seeing big increases there, as I've already mentioned, because of inflation.
Well, they have to pay their employees now too.
Yeah. So, and that's not just our cleaning contract, that's a lot of our maintenance contracts that we have for, you know, let's say, fire alarm inspections or boiler maintenance, HVAC, you know, sort of stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah. We have three vehicles that maintenance, three of our trucks that, that fleet has recommended. Actually, it's more than that, originally maintenance requested more, but we included three of those in the budget. Those are approaching a hundred fifty thousand dollars, a hundred fifty thousand miles on those trucks. We need to keep those things up and running so we can clear roads when we get the snow or parking lots. This is our pay-go maintenance line, so pay-as-you-go maintenance. Dr. Taylor touched on that, I think, in his presentation a little bit, it's in the enhancements. We're not recommending putting anything in there right now, but we wanted to call it out to bring attention to it. Is it somewhere we should be working towards is getting additional funds in our operating budget so we don't rely on financing for some of our routine maintenance and replacement work that we have to do on our school buildings.
I know we talked about this on Taylor before, but, so the pay-go, as you look at it, you'd be pulling, you'd be looking at what's end of year surplus funding to put in there, do you just allocate a certain amount to go directly in there every cycle? How does that work?
So this should be something that is directly tied to future five-year, ten-year plans, where we would take part of our operating budget, small portion, and we would add to it every year into the base budget to go into the CIP. So a suggestion might be preview to next year, that a million dollars be put into pay-go major maintenance, so that in ten years, we have a fund of ten million dollars per year that covers some of our maintenance expense. In twenty years, you're actually caught up to what you actually need, because you need about twenty million dollars just to maintain these existing buildings in today's dollars. That's what it costs.
And I would say you guys have yet to see the three R list, so it's the list. It's, there's the volumes of it. Right, and so what you see is at the end of the year, the salary lapse money gets allocated to some of these projects. We never get enough projects off the list to catch up. Like, it's just.
And I think that's what, that's what I'm asking, like, that money that you're talking about, that would go in here. Are we targeting a million dollars here or are we looking at this non-discretionary funding every year?
We're targeting, looking, oh, you're gonna have these expenses every year, there's no question about it.
Well, so, so the savings that you have here, right? Are we looking at saying like, okay, well, we saved here, here, and here, we're gonna take this much money from here, it's already been spent.
A portion of that should definitely go to funding some of those projects. But what I'm saying is, is that there is no plan in place right now to fund your needs and sooner rather than later, we're gonna be at this crisis point.
Right.
Where we are not maintaining our buildings with fidelity. Some might suggest that that was several years ago.
Okay.
Do you know what the three are?
Yes, it's part, it's part of the capital improvement plan. So what we would suggest is that in the future, we make this investment where we're adding a million dollars a year to building up a fund in the base budget that goes to the capital improvement plan to cover some of those projects with fidelity.
Okay.
Because, oh, so go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so I, I get the whole adding to a fund thing, but how does that work from actually using the money? Cause like, we put a million in, but I think we all know, we could take a whole million out and.
No, 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 it's, it's.
No, you will, you will.
Will.
So every year, we'd.
Every year, you'd spend twenty million dollars to maintain our facilities.
Right, but I can't go across, yeah, I can't go across the street and say, give me twenty million dollars.
So you're saying like one million the first year, put in two million the second year, I think. Okay.
So.
With the intention of using that whatever's in every year.
So, yes, and so this is an important part of explaining our budget. So scroll up a little bit. So base budget is really our starting offshore, okay? And so every budget discussion we're gonna have, you've already adjudicated the base budget. The past school board and the past board of supervisors have already adjudicated the base budget. No one is complaining about the base budget, everyone agrees, these are the things we need to spend on schools. Everything after this is what we talk about, so things we take out and the things we add in. So what we would be adding in is a million dollars a year to the base budget so that over time, there would be a larger expenditure on your pay-as-you-go major maintenance issues. So, and it's, it's tricky, because people say, oh my gosh, thirty, thirty million dollars? The school system costs thirty million dollars to run? No, 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 thirty, thirty million dollars is new money. And so everything that we would be talking about would be in this new money standpoint of, you know, how are we managing our existing resources? And what do we need to add to keep it going? And then down at the bottom, how do we get better? Makes sense?
Yeah.
Chris, correctly, I thought that we had an agreement with the county that they were gonna give us a set amount every year. Did they, do they, do they actually do that?
So it's built into our CIP in that three R list, we have about one point four or five million dollars that's funded each year. It's cash funded to go towards capital projects.
Okay, so let's pause. You need twenty million dollars a year.
And you're getting one point.
And you're getting one point four million dollars to cover that need.
And, and this has been an ongoing discussion.
That's a problem.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that was a thing.
And if you're wondering how we came up with twenty million dollars, it's really nineteen million dollars, but it, it's two and a half percent of the value of your assets. That's the metric to use. You have about almost eight hundred million dollars in assets, almost, in terms of your physical property and what you own. So you need about twenty million dollars to maintain that every year. And if you're thinking about your house too, you should probably think about two and a half percent of the value of your house. But what it costs for major maintenance per year, just rule of thumb, not bad homeownership tip.
I knew this was gonna pay off sooner than.
I'll calculate ours, see if that.
That's right.
Yes, and I will tell you that if you don't spend that two and a half percent, then when you finally do it, you're, it's gonna cost them.
When you're leased to twenty million.
We built a new house from the inside out.
So I could actually probably flip over and show you right into our maintenance line where you would see those utility increases. You can drill down and see how much of this utility increase is electric, gas, propane, water, sewer.
Just, just to be clear, in previous years, how big was the increase in, in utilities? I'm, I'm assuming six point nine percent is a huge jump from previous years.
Yeah, so we actually had a, we did a, sorry, I'm drawing a blank, a energy performance contract where we came in, paid, it's actually trained, but they do more than just HVAC work. They came in and we paid them, we, we borrowed the money, a capital lease, we paid them. They came in and we paid them, we borrowed the money, a capital lease, we paid them to do a bunch of work, but everything is tied to energy savings, so electric or water. They could, they replaced our light bulbs that are more energy efficient, and that was a few years ago. So, this is on top of those savings. So, we experience savings, and we still track that very closely. Our energy performance manager that we have in maintenance is phenomenal and tracks that. And really, if we don't see those savings, we get to charge it back to Trane, they have to cover us for those savings. So, it's a net savings that we have every year, even though we have to pay for that lease, you know, pay for the work that they did. So, we really get a lot of improvements, net cost, or net savings. So, I explain that because, yeah, in some years, we actually saw big decreases there. This is on top of those savings that we've had, so now it's like starting to tick back up, and that's because as we expand, you know, for more students, or more activities going on, just the price and the rate increases, they looked at that to determine, these are the increases. See, it's not usually six percent.
Yeah, that's, that's huge.
Yeah. We do have some cyclic replacement, a big line here is our technology line, that Mr. Cook does a good job of planning that out, so we're not hit with replacing all of our servers, equipment, Chromebooks, laptops, all in the same year. We have some software increases, a lot of that is just annual increases in contracts again, you know, so some of those contractual increases. We do have a budget-
Can I ask something about the cyclic replacement of technology?
Yeah.
So, the technology advisory came to us, and they had a really good plan, and I think Mr. Cook was adopting that as well, or agreed with it. And so, is that the plan that we are currently using, where they get them in kindergarten, get another one in fifth grade, get another one in ninth?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that-
Yep.
We do have some sort of service, like, for lack of a better, a survey contract on our Chromebooks?
Yeah, so they have a warranty, I'm gonna say for five years, but don't quote me, it's roughly, you know, four or five-
I had a middle school teacher say that she was just worried that kids were enjoying them more quickly than they could be replaced, and wondered if we had a tech graveyard somewhere of-
We have a, we have a tech shop that, you know, we have broken ones, or have problems with them, they go to our tech shop, a lot of it-
Lots of screens, lots of spillage, lots of-
We can replace a lot of that, and so that goes through our department, we don't just trash everything that comes back.
What's our staff replacement cycle look like?
No, excuse me?
The, the staff technology replacement cycle, what does that look like?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not as frequent even probably as our student replacement, but I don't, I don't wanna speak to it, cause I don't know the details.
But I would, I would recommend meeting with Jay, I mean, I went and met with him and, and was talking to him about the replacement stuff and the breakage, and it was much lower than I thought it would be.
I, I didn't hear him say that, too.
Our breakage is lower than most school districts.
That's what I've heard.
So, it's a percentage.
But I was just even curious what the, what the staff replacement cycle looked like? Was it a certain year, was it when they said, hey, I got an issue? What was that? That's fine, just curious.
And a lot of our-
Thank you.
Included in the, in the staff replacement is Chromebooks, cause we do provide Chromebooks to all of our, our teachers, our licensed staff as well. In fact, we do the new teacher institute, which is all of our new staff to us, come in in July, early August, and we do a four or five-day, week-long institute, and we try to give them, if not, we try to work our new ones into them, so as our other teachers leave and we have to replace or whatever, we don't want a brand-new teacher to us to get like a five-year-old Chromebook or something, so we want them to have that, you know, new Chromebook, and that's worked into the replacement cycle.
Thank you.
I know, Jay told me that they were starting a respect the tech campaign-
Yeah.
Okay, oh, yes, yes.
And then he also told me that when families are held liable for breakage, they're more reluctant to take the technology home, which is one of the reasons that they try not to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I thought we were liable, that's why we don't use ours. Because I was like, I'm not paying, but literally, we just put ours on the top of the closet so our kids can't touch it.
We have insurance that covers some of it.
Yeah.
We guarantee so you can use it.
I was gonna say, a lot of parents are using, don't, don't break that, cause we have to pay for it also, so, don't take us away from it. Don't tell our kids, yes.
Sometimes ride where children gently.
So, in our, I mentioned this already, but we have, it's about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars increase in our bus replacement line, that's actually not a single bus or multiple buses. That is just because of a price increase we're seeing in the cost of buses. So, that's still only to purchase twelve buses, which is what we have in the, in the bus, or in the budget in the prior year. And then we have about a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase, and I already mentioned, actually, I was just going through the open go of our, our virtual budget book, about a hundred and a thousand of that is for fuel for buses, and then we also have our fleet service charges. So, as that fleet's getting older, as we have to maintain it, we're, you know, luckily, we're, we have an internal service fund, our own fleet department does that, so we get it a lot cheaper. But as we expand our, and our fleet and have to do our, our routine maintenance, there's just an increased cost in there. And so that was about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar increase.
Wait, the health insurance increase was really big this year, too.
It was, and so, I'll get to that when we talk about our health benefits fund, and I'll be able to expand on that a little bit more.
I have a weird question, I don't know what this is, so, so just in terms of looking at this, and I've worked on budgets in the past, where like they had a matching component going into the community, are these based on, like, that fuel cost? Is this based on like, a, a contract or something that you worked with a, with a company or whatever, like a community, like a, it was a community matching program? Like, you would go out, we would have to go out and match our budget to a certain extent, not me, but nobody trusts me with that, no. The budget cycle, so you would go out and say, like, okay, we have this much money set aside for this, we need this much more money to get community involvement in, we would have to go and get a contract with these people to subsidize that. Is that this, or is this just flat rate, what we have, we have?
The latter.
Okay.
We do have a state comp, just so you know, we're not just going and playing the highest price for fuel. We have a state contract that's been negotiated at the state level with Quarles that provides our fuel.
So, it is similar, that's, that's sort of what I'm saying, but, but that's also a little bit different, but that's another line, another element to it.
Yeah.
Completely on another, just to relate to the fuel, do we have the second fuel depot yet?
I'm sorry if I can't hear you.
Do we have the second fuel depot yet, or is, are we any-
And I'll touch on that when I get to the fleet services fund. But, great question. So, to the, the fun stuff, I'm gonna kinda work backwards here a little bit, because the teacher scale, I'm gonna move from this screen and just show you what that teacher scale looks like, that was in the presentation. So, I'm gonna work in, kinda skip around a little bit. So, we're doing a five percent increase for all non-licensed employees, and that's anybody that's not on our teacher scale, which actually includes more than just teachers, I do include that when we show our teacher scale. I think it's actually in the book where you see the teacher scale, it lists who's included in that. Our non, our non-licensed, so our service scale employees are, you know, us folks, it is our maintenance employees, it's technology, it's our bus drivers, paraprofessionals, our administrators, that's a five percent across the board. And that costs about three point eight million dollars.
So, fun, fun preview to next year, I know this won't surprise anybody, we'll be looking at how we might decompress scales for service scale next year as a primary focus.
Yeah.
We did it last year, so, yeah.
Yeah, but there's some technical adjustments we need to do.
We made it dented it last year.
So, that's for like, the cafeteria workers?
Everybody who's not a teacher counselor on the licensed scale.
Now, we are enhancing food service workers, though, right?
We are, and so, that's-
That's separate.
That's in our nutrition fund, which I'll touch on in a few minutes, too.
At the next meeting? And you did say it's, we're all central office staff, too?
Yes.
Okay. And our nurses on the teachers?
They're on our teachers, yeah. Yes, ma'am?
I remember doing that.
Good memory.
Are you kidding? It took me ten years to get the nurses on the teachers' scale.
Now, and we're using, but he's gonna use one now.
So, touching briefly on our substitutes, looking at more of a surge pricing model, a premium day model for our substitutes. We know that Friday, or the day before a holiday, maybe the day after a holiday, are our toughest days to fill substitutes. Now, we're hoping that we're not gonna have as many vacancies when we do the first line item here, but we're still gonna need substitutes. So, we're looking at increasing the line that we specifically have in our budget book, or, or, sorry, in our budget for kinda these premium days to pay, pay a little bit more to those Fridays and those other days that are tougher to fill, because substitutes are harder to come by, or because it's days that teachers tend to take off more, or any employee.
Well, if that bill goes through, requiring that every elementary school teacher must have X amount of planning a day, that's just a dent in what we're gonna need to spend.
Correct. Super Bowl Monday is brutal, by the way. It's like a Friday, times two.
It should be an actual holiday to day after, because nobody wants to go to work.
That's why we asked them to move it to Saturday.
Yeah, move the Super Bowl to Saturday, that makes a little sense.
More for, more on the service scale, I think maybe it was at the Fab C I shared this, but we were a little caught off guard this year, and now we know for in the future, our payday, right after Black Friday, happened to be like that first day back after work. And everybody just had this long break for Thanksgiving, and we expect all of our bus drivers, like, well, we're not gonna have a very high call-out rate. Turns out, we had a high call-out rate, and obviously didn't have the substitute drivers, so we were not very efficient that day. And it turns to find out as we start digging, well, that was the first payday, you know, right after Black Friday and everything, so you have all the heavy shopping over Thanksgiving break, and that December first paycheck came immediately after. And so, I think a lot of people were either taking off, pay bills, you know, deposit check, not deposit checks, it's everything, direct deposit now, but... So, something now that we know as we go forward, we gotta look at that, from our, so we can plan for it a little bit better on the transportation side. Speaking of transportation, looking at adding fifteen drivers to transportation, and that's really key to moving back to a three-tier model. You'll say, hey, we had a three-tier model before. The point is, is what you probably never realized is, on that three-tier model-
Oh, I realize.
We still had multiple loads of children, it was just planned that way, so it wasn't considered late, but we wanna get to where we can get every kid to school on time, and leaving school as close as possible to the end of the school day. On that three-tier model, that takes additional drivers. Now, we know we wanna move back there, we're doing the survey, and then we'll have a proposal on February eighth, is that right? So, this is a tentative number, but we think it's pretty close, based on what we're gonna need. Yes, ma'am?
Well, you said before, we have an additional sixty bus drivers already.
Buses, not drivers, buses, oh, for this year, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so those sixty bus drivers, some of them are still waiting for buses which haven't arrived, or are these the white buses I see around town sometimes?
So, the sixty drivers that we hired, we were short drivers to start the year. So, we start the year with two hundred and twenty-five budgeted FTE bus drivers. Budgeted, we were sixty short to start the year, so right now, we're back up to about two twenty-five, two thirty, we're like still hiring them because-
So, we're still in the, okay, I got you.
So, we need to-
Where we should have been.
We filled everything, yeah, now that, we wish we would have been on day one.
Yeah.
We filled all of those, now we need to add another fifteen to facilitate-
Yep, I heard it, I almost heard it backwards, okay, cool.
And we have about a ten percent call-out rate. So, every day, about one out of every ten of our bus drivers calls in, so we need that reserve-
Yep.
To drive that bus for the person that calls in.
Yep.
Yeah, so we're, we're continuing to hire, because there are substitute drivers, we know that they're gonna have a route every day, it just won't be in a signed route.
I mean, I, I, when you said it before, it almost sounded like we had sixty drivers, like, in our cash, like, waiting to like, for us to adjust these routes and get the buses in, like, that we were hiring in anticipation of receiving all that, so I misunderstood that, but that makes more sense.
I wish.
I know, right? That would be awesome.
It's not an episode of Taxi.
I'm just, yeah, I just went utopic there for a minute, I'm sorry.
A, a very small number here, well, before I jump there, we also, this is where the, included in the six sixty-one is that communication specialist we wanna add down, transportation.
Oh, we need that, that's good.
We need another body down there to really manage that process. So, the last one here, really minor, but our restroom trailer, so think, if you go to like a wedding and they got like a nice little, we have porta potties at various sites.
I'm so glad this was thought of, because that has been a very vocal concern of our drivers.
So, we're looking at some improvement and retention strategies for bus drivers.
Yes, and that's thoughtful.
Retention really being key there, that, down there.
Where are we putting it?
So, this one would go down right at our bus depot fleet.
Okay.
So, when they come in and park, or they're moving between runs or whatever, that they can quickly use this, and not making them use a porta potty. You'll be, they can come in, we've got the fleet building and the, the transportation building, but, you know, you've got two hundred and twenty drivers, or, you know, maybe a hundred and fifty of them that are using that fleet, there's just not enough time, we want something out there in the lot, they can plow, you know, jump in real easily. And it might be something that we expand on in the future to some of our other, where we have some other lots.
Yeah, especially since we need more parking for buses, if we could have like facilities, cause I know it's a problem for bus drivers, just to know that they-
Yeah, we are. You know, long-term, we actually-
Who cleans this?
It would be, I think it's contractor, so, these are not-
I just wanna make sure it's done enough, you know, like, not once a week, kind of thing.
Yeah, it'll be clean.
There's only two boys.
I know!
And it'll be a hundred times better than a porta potty.
I'm sorry, Chris, but men are gross, and I'm just, we just need to make sure these are cleaned.
Men.
Usually, and I don't-
True, true, girls in a dorm.
I don't have the details on the specific trailer that we've quoted out and stuff, but usually, it's still like, hey, male and female, you know, it's two, you know, you come in, it's like two entrances, one for male, one for female.
Got it.
And, you know, long-term, we're actually looking at some stuff of taking a bus that maybe we dispose of, and turning it, you know, gutting it, and almost turning it into like a lounge area for drivers that's out in some of these lots, so, you know, because they do have a couple hours in between the morning and the afternoon shifts, that isn't always enough time to-
I wanna decorate it.
Or go, sometimes they like to go run in.
Yeah, but that would give them a place to even have their own meetings or- Could you have our kids, like, design, that, you know, like, didn't you do that in just where you wrapped the bus?
Yeah.
And stuff, and, like, did the inside, Maya wants to help?
Oh, yeah, I wanna decorate it.
She'll decorate it.
Yeah.
It's my mom.
That's really a neat idea.
Yeah, so really looking forward to that, you know, maybe it's something that, cause it's-
What a great way to recycle a bus, true.
But involve kids.
Yeah, I mean, you could really pick at the community and house with that.
An opportunity for kids, give back to driving the tiny home shows.
Yes. Then we can have a small, four-minute one.
That would be fantastic.
A work session, that'd be great. That is so, that is a great idea, that's, you know, of all the ideas I've heard, that's, that's, that's so, that's something about-
Trish would like one for her retirement.
Retirement party there.
Any bad information now, cause Trish is very excited, so we're gonna stay on this happy-
About this bus, you know, that we're gonna-
We'll take a mini bu, mini bus-
Don't give us any bad news about buses right now.
Unconverted for a school board lounge area, only hold two people, though.
No, we'll public notice it, they can come on the bus with us.
It's not a camera.
Wasn't there a school board that had to resign over, I think the whole board, because they had a meeting, that, then they said some inappropriate things, all of them.
Really? Oh, that was in California, I think, yeah. Oh, that would be us.
No.
That would totally be us, what are you talking about?
Totally, it's something inappropriate.
She's talking about someone else.
It would be me, for sure, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, it would be you.
Let's take a vote, I'm Ava.
It's not a secret, let's face it.
Okay, if you need a lawyer, just call me.
Yeah, there you go.
Or maybe talk to her beforehand.
Criminal law, right? Shining.
Not for thirty-five years.
So, so the biggest chunk of our discretionary expenditures are going into that teacher scale. And I could, I could talk for hours about the need for that, I'm gonna spend my time on this, I think everybody understands what we're trying to accomplish there, and, and really trying to take advantage of maybe a market right now that we can, we can jump on for teachers. You know, we still have, I know when it was prior reported, maybe ninety teacher vacancies, you know, the impact that has on our current teachers and, and retention there, so knowing that if we can start to make that, I don't even wanna say a dent, because it is a dent, but previously, we're like, hey, a multi-year model. That multi-year model was gonna start to be a struggle, because as we tried to move up, there are other divisions are moving up at that same rate.
What I was just gonna ask, you spots who just passed their new budget, and I know that they, that's their big focus, too, is their teachers' compensation, how are we gonna compare to them now?
Yeah, so, they're doing a flat percentage, so they are-
That's it?
They, I thought they were, they were doing it in-
They're doing something to the scale, but based on the dollar amount that they're investing, it's nowhere near what we're doing.
Okay, good, that's fine.
Yeah, and they are hearing complaints about that, because I had a board member call me and say, you know, we were talking about something else, and she, and she was like, well, everybody wants to come work for Stavros, and I'm like, so.
Yeah, yes!
Open up your arms, real big.
Cool, so, we're not, we're not on Real School Board of Virginia.
Why are we not increasing the entry pay by five percent? I'm just curious about that, because-
So, we are making exactly that. We are jumping one thousand dollars from, our starting pay this year is forty-eight thousand, we're going to forty-nine thousand.
That's not five percent, though, is it?
It's five point one percent.
One percent, that's-
For, for our, for a new teacher this year, they'll go to the step one next year, so they're getting more than that one thousand.
Okay, but, but when we hire, right now, we're hiring at forty-eight-
Okay, but, but when we hire, right now we're hiring at forty-eight, so what's five percent of forty-eight? It's not a thousand.
Oh, no, it's, it's about two thousand five, four hundred dollars.
Right, so we're not really increasing our starting salary.
Can't afford it. We're, we're increasing our starting salary by one thousand dollars.
Well, but not, not to five percent.
Yeah, we, we had looked at a model that started at five thou, at fifty thousand and that was great.
It's because we can't afford it.
Yeah.
Forty million dollars difference.
You learned a lot from that.
So.
What, is there, is there a jump from that first year to that second year, which is the line one? Is that sort of commensurate with what we're looking at? So that's the five percent.
Yeah, that's the five percent.
Which, so this is set up so they're on the same line here. And on this, I show the colors so that.
That you're right.
Where the yellow, somebody has ten year teacher right now making fifty-two nine.
Right.
Next year, they're going to be an eleven, on step eleven, making sixty-two. So that's their increase, which is the difference between those two, and that's the percentage.
Okay.
So just speaking back to what Liza was mentioning, we're starting at zero.
Oh, that's my son. He's out of college for two years and he's.
And they started with us at forty-eight. Where do they start with Spotsy?
They started at forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
No.
Yeah.
And Spotsy, they're at forty-nine?
No, we're at forty-nine.
They're, they're pretty close. They're, they're pretty close.
I'm just wondering what their zero is?
They're, they're.
They're that lowest line.
They're the, the green line, so they're, they're maybe a thousand dollars off us.
Okay.
So they're still lower.
But that's this year. We don't know what their next year is.
Yeah, and you, and you can see, we've kept pace with Spotsy.
Right.
Like, so this, the difference is, is that we would, we would, in a way, kind of, kind of lead a little bit with Prince William, but their slope is at three percent, ours is at a percent and a half. So things that we can do to improve this over time is we can start creeping up the percent distance between steps over time to start improving the slope. And we can start improving the base. Those are almost the two numbers that we would want to tweak every year
Okay.
to start making improvements gradually over time.
Right.
The tough part is, is almost like, to get the structure in place in the first place, you kind of have to rip off the band-aid. And that's what this is. So, once we've ripped off the band-aid, it becomes a lot easier to, to make some improvements. So you'll see, the first five steps are, the distance is three percent difference.
Right.
So we're, we're giving you a three percent improvement for the first five years, and then it's one and a half percent. Well, if we start adding more of these steps to three percent over time, we can grow the scale over time to be more and more in line with how Prince William does it and more competitive with Prince William over time.
Okay, so it puts us in competition with them as far as how you do it, but not necessarily numbers to numbers.
Yeah, and you may ask why here, if you're, if you're curious. Well, this is where the majority of our teachers are.
Retention too, right?
And retention, for sure. And this is also, you either have to do it at the bottom or the top, and candidly, at, at the, at the bottom of your scale to grow it is the smarter way to do it because mathematically it works better.
Besides, more of our teachers are in that entry level.
So this impacts more of our teachers. So as we grow this over time, it will lead to retention.
So the last column is the increase from today's, this year's salary.
Correct, the net.
And these are guaranteed increases of three percent regardless of.
No.
No, no. Look at the last column, look at the last column, other page, other sheet.
Nothing guaranteed. Year over year, support evaluation, how they want to do it.
See, this is why we got into this.
So if you look at that last column, there's a range of in, percent increase. So it starts at five point one five and it goes all the way up to like nineteen point four nine, I think.
Yeah.
So, and then it goes.
Cause damn, oh, I see what you're saying.
And it's helpful to know that, you know, you, we've got the number of teachers per step.
Right, right.
So that you, you have a pretty good idea. And it's, you know, less than fifty when you get in here, but it's like two hundred up here almost.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That would be information. I would like to have a copy of that sheet too, because I would like to see how many teachers are in each of those.
Sure.
Okay, and one, just for background, we got into this situation because there were a number of years where we gave no raises.
Yeah.
And what happened, we used to go off, actually it was two point four or five percent was our, our, our step in between.
That's what I was wondering.
And there were so many years we didn't give anything that, you know, our, several superintendents ago suggested, well, rather than have people think that they're going to get this and you're not going to give it to them, they just compressed it. So by compressing it, then it, it, it just was very demoralizing and this is trying to get them back, you know, to have that difference. And the, and I, I mentioned to Dr. Taylor, that historically, we did this once. It was about fifteen or so years ago, maybe more.
Except a lot of them were here for them, for that.
But we actually had some raises that were close to twenty percent, but because it was so out of whack with, with these steps, so this is not, I mean, it, it's not anything that has, we haven't done before.
So, so the anticipation though is right now, based on current situation, we would start at forty-nine, but in future years, that base salary is going to have to come up to.
Oh, every year, yeah, yeah.
So then you're looking at having to move.
And it will have a ripple effect. Yeah, it will have a ripple effect. What we're trying to do here is give you a system that one is responsible with the amount of money that you have right now.
Right.
Two, that you can grow over time, and three, that's sustainable.
Yeah.
Maya, did you have something?
I did, and this is not a budget question. I'm just hoping someone here has the, or can tell me a estimate. For a first year teacher working in Stafford, I know different localities do it differently. Do they already have to have their licensing before they can start?
We, we help with the processing of licensing. So you have the.
That's a yes and no.
whole process of career.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to look at the education, you know, how many years that they're, they've put in to just be able to be a first year teacher.
And I just, and I just want to point out to folks that when I got on the board, Spotsy was on top of us on many of the pay grades. So it has been taking years to try to fix that problem. So it's nice that we did last year manage to get above them on pretty much up until the very highest. But I would love to see more air between us and.
Yes.
So one, one last thing I'll add here. It's really interesting, the difference in philosophies, okay? Because Prince William flats their first five years because it's the most expensive for them.
Yeah.
Okay? Then they start to go up. And what we're trying to do is trying to accelerate for the most amount of our teachers. And then we're going to grow it over time, but, but it is an interesting philosophical difference.
Well, Stafford used to pay, used to do similar because they wanted to get experienced teachers.
Right, but then when there's, when we had that compression, the, the money was put into the beginning so that we could recruit the people.
Yep.
But isn't it historically, I mean, I've been told studies over the years that if someone's going to leave teaching, which a lot do, they leave within those first five years. So it may be your ROI, return on investment after five years, if they stay, then they're more likely to be committed.
And that's the next question. What's.
Or they stay here and then they go to Prince William.
Life's, teacher life's family.
They get their kids in here.
Thank you.
Point six.
Are we getting to a break for a break or one? No, no, I'm talking about the presentation.
I think, yeah, I think we're really close to wrapping up the operating budget discussion and then.
All right, well, let's do, you.
And in fact, I'm, I just want to, one last thing, because I've covered everything on the teacher scale and to Ms. Healy. And point is right on our teacher scale. We actually put a note on there that says, hey, this is for FY twenty-three. We strive to, try to maintain this scale, but there is no guarantee in FY twenty-four that you're going to be making what step eighteen makes.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
And we list what job titles, probably not every single one, but our big categories that are included on our teacher scale. And at the bottom, we included a note in the italics about that above step thirty-five, they're not listed on here because we're stopping, but they're going to take their current pay and they're still getting the five percent. And our service scale employees are getting that five percent.
This is great because so many teachers will come in and say, you promised me, you promised me these raises. When we can't promise anything for next year.
Nope.
And the same budget in FY twenty-four is at five percent. It's not going to be that we just take the scale and increase it five percent. It's going to be a mix of increasing the scale and then doing like an accr, you know, a cost of living increase to that scale. But we want to maintain the same shape and same increases between steps. So we'll, we'll tweak the scale and work that five percent into that model of the scale.
And this is so understandable. I love it.
I am actually shocked that I can understand.
I was really intimidated, so.
It has not been like this in the past. I can interview you.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm like, man, I'm so much smarter than I thought. Look at me, like, I did all this.
Yeah, Maya.
For me, it's for them doing most of math.
So now that we're running the meeting, we can take a break now and then we'll just cover the other funds and then I'll kind of be.
Okay, yes. All right, so how much do we want? Ten minutes? Is that enough?
Yeah, that's.
Try for ten, be back in twelve, you know.
We're discussing, not even close. I think everyone's back, right? We're good to go, Ms. Healy?
Absolutely.
All right. So the superintendent presents an operating budget. But the school board actually approves and requests the county to appropriate not only our operating budget, but what I'm going to refer to as other funds. So we have other funds separate from our regular operating budget. For instance, our fleet service technicians and fleet services department is internal service fund that's separate of our operating fund. They do all our maintenance work on our buses and repairs. We have federal grants that are tracked at a separate fund so that we make sure that the money we spend is tied directly to those federal grants. This is a, is a high level of our, of each of our grants and what the award is projected for next year. These change. We have a contingency amount of two point five and that's unfunded. So as we get additional grants or grant amounts change, we don't have to go back and ask for an additional appropriation. We already have the appropriation. We would just move, you know, ten, twenty, fifty thousand dollars into the appropriate grant. Right now, we're just projecting a two percent. We don't always know what the exact dollar amounts are for our grants yet. But no significant changes here. I'm going to point out, especially since it came up in our school board meeting, the ESSR money, the federal funds that we get, none of that is tied to enforcing any sort of mask policy or anything else. We, we get reimbursement for those ESSR funds or reimbursement of COVID-related expenditures.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that sentence?
I'm sorry.
Because someone was talking and I could not hear you.
She's such a troublemaker, I tell you. Now we got more than one of them.
So.
Yeah, your ears were ringing.
I got one neighbor and I have to sit next to the teacher over here, so.
Most of our, most of our grants are at a two percent increase, but the ESSR funding, our stabilization funds are actually going to zero. Those were all already appropriated either part of the budget process last year or separate of the budget process. And it's a multi-year budget. We only have it appropriated in that first year because you don't get it re-appropriated every year. Because it's appropriated in total, it just spans over multiple years.
But we haven't spent them all.
We have not spent it all.
So even though it says zero, we still have some funding there to, to spend.
Correct. But.
But it's already been appropriated, so it's not like we have, it's, it's pretty much, it's spent, but it's just allocated.
It's been allocated. The dollars haven't all been out the door yet. So it's.
We will reap the benefit of it next.
Over, yeah, still for twenty-three and twenty-four.
But if you put it on that spreadsheet, then it raises the numbers, which is why you have.
It adds like we're getting another eight million, ten million. Exactly.
Is that all we get from McKinney-Bento? That's the homeless students. Thirty-four thousand, that's all.
So we have some other donations that are related to McKinney-Bento that are not actually federally supported.
That's nothing.
We've been very fortunate. We've had like a, a local contribution, like an anonymous contribution for several, several years. I'm going to say like at least ten. You know, started out like ten, twenty, thirty. I want to say it's like fifty thousand dollars a year we get towards that.
It's, what is that thirty-four thousand paid for?
I'd have to look, Ms. Healy, I don't know if I'm going to.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious. You'd be surprised how many homeless students we have. And they're primarily in the high schools.
Means transportation.
Yeah, it's transportation, you know, we help to try to support with, you know, and this is part of this maybe, but also part of the other donation we get. If they need, you know, hotel costs or like a one night, you know, sort of transition. And that's why having that general donation from somebody is beneficial because we have a lot more flexible flexibility that we can use those funds.
Is that not a growing population for it to be just that flat? I mean, I know it's not our doing, but I'm just so curious.
Um, yeah, it is a, a growing population, but.
I mean, not a lot, but I'm just, yeah.
That's nothing.
We don't, we don't get any four A funds, title four A. I see four B on here. I just.
Um.
What's four A?
Um, it will cover things like STEM and IB programs. It'll include mental health ser, like programs and like violence prevention programs. A lot of the stuff I do in my day job falls under four A, which is why I thought it was more important than it is. So.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check and make sure it's not rolled up into.
Something else.
Something else.
Yeah.
All right, so any questions about the grants and if so, I'll have to, we'll get the answer, question, you know, get your questions and we'll come back to them.
Can I just very quickly?
Yeah.
We can get back to you on the McKinney-Bento question. So do we spend, do we have any money in our budget that we spend for that to support those students?
I will, I will say yes, because we do a lot on the transportation side that definitely exceeds thirty-four thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
That we, that we fund locally.
We also have a McKinney-Bento staff and an office that we also staff. So we do have some.
We're definitely spending more than just thirty-four thousand dollars a year.
We're a social worker, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, half of a social worker.
So I'm just.
Because we, McKinney-Bento, we could have somebody that lives in Fairfax that we have to go pick up and bring down here to attend school in Stafford because their last known location was Stafford, last school division was Stafford. They've become homeless and now they're living in, you know, Fairfax is a bad example, but we do have some up north. We have a lot in Spotsylvania and Fredericksburg. So we can't take a general led bus and truck it all the way down to Spotsylvania, which is why our many buses that we'll have on the road hopefully in a few weeks will actually help us in those situations too.
I'm, so are they living in the homeless shelters in Fredericksburg?
Yeah, homeless shelters. It could be hotels.
Or they could be with like a, a family member. It's just that they don't have a home, like if they're with a grandmother.
Yeah.
I think technically they fall under that definition. See, I learned all this on the, the House Advisory Committee.
Oh, see that?
Okay, I'm just curious. I had not sort of realized that, I, I knew that we had homeless children who were living in hotels in South Stafford.
I think the hotels is probably the most prominent example, and then we have homeless shelters. As you can imagine, we don't want to take a school bus, you know, with other kids on it. We're not going to pull up to certain locations. So we, we try to schedule those so that's either the first stop, you know, we take that into consideration. All right. Capital Projects Fund. So this is not our CIP budget. We're going to be getting into that discussion later. The only thing that actually gets in the initial adopted budget for CI, in our Capital Projects Fund, are some salaries and like parking lot money that we, that we collect. That's the only, that the, the board of supervisors only appropriate that small amount. The rest of it is appropriated the time that the project is approved. So when you look at this, you'll see our actuals are a lot higher than what we budget each year. And that's because, you know, like the biggest example, I'm sure in FY twenty-one is going to be Ferry Farm. When you look at a lot of these expenditures, was that Ferry Farm renovation. So all of our major capital projects goes into the Capital Projects Fund. It's just approved and appropriated outside of this normal budget process.
How long has that set rate been the, the, the amount we've received from the county?
That's one point four four?
One point four four.
Yeah, so that's the cash funding that we were speaking of earlier.
Yeah, how long has it been at that level?
I will say, well, it didn't exist at all until about four years ago and it's been flat at that level for that time.
So it was zero and then they went, okay.
Now, there is still, in the CIP, we get money for some of these small, larger, smaller projects, not renovations, but it's in, but it's bond funded. So this is the cash funding that is automatically appropriated as part of the budget. And then we have our larger projects that we, it's about five million dollars a year that they, that we borrow through VPSA, bond borrow. And then there's the debt service that the county occurs on top of for that. So because we're, because Lionel and John will be touching more on our CIP growth and buildings when, when they jump up after I finish this discussion. I'm going to jump past and spend more of the time on some of the funds where we do have a little bit more going on. So school nutrition. I already mentioned earlier about how there's been a lot of inconsistency, inconsistency in our school years. And so looking at actuals, I would say school nutrition is the best example of that. Because for the past two years, the federal government has provided free lunch and breakfast for all students. So the first year with, if they were in the building, we provided it to them. And we also did all of our off-site locations and deliveries to those locations. And then this year, with them all being in school, we are providing those. And I've, and Brian did a presentation, we've talked about it. Our meals have like almost doubled in what we're producing for breakfast and lunch. So that's a good thing. Our school nutrition, we get reimbursed for every single one of those meals directly from the federal government. So we don't have to charge our kids. So we're collecting zero dollars from our kids this year. Federal government is contributing to that. A lot more kids participating now because of that. So we see a big increase in our, our food line, or, and not staffing because we're short-staffed, but in the actual cost of the meals. Long story short is, we're doing really, really well in the school nutrition fund because we're doing it with less people than we're producing more meals and we're getting reimbursed a hundred percent of it. So we came into the year with a surplus and we're going to have another surplus for this year. But what this FY twenty-three budget right now represents is our best guess at going back to a pre-pandemic delivery model of our regular free and reduced students being reimbursed from the government, but not every single one of our students. Right now, that free. Right now, that free program for all is running out on June thirtieth. So for next school year, we're going to be back to a model of students paying for breakfast and lunch unless they're free and reduced. Now.
Are we gonna, I mean, I assume we're gonna have some sort of notification process and in an effort to retain the people, because I know that getting the right families onto free and reduced lunch was really hard, pre-COVID, because of the process. So if we can utilize this program going away as a way to retain more of those people.
Did they, did they get rid of, because for a little while there, if you were on Medicaid, you automatically got put into free or reduced lunch. And then did that get changed in there somewhere?
No, but to Mrs. Sigmund's point, and she's absolutely right. This is, uh, an exercise in paperwork and it is a little bit of a challenge for a lot of our families to.
I just wanted to make sure it had become even more of a challenge.
Oh, it, it will be reverting back to some old processes that candidly, the last time they did it was three years ago.
Yeah, it's not even in the radar of things to do.
Not even, so we definitely will have to.
A long lead time.
And, and I think it's incumbent on us, and this is an important thing so that, that you all can at least sleep a little easier on too, is that having, having grace in the, in the serving line while the first few weeks of school are, are in place so that kids have access to the regular meal and that they're, you know, they're, they're not interrupted in service while we're getting this paperwork included.
A hundred percent.
So we tried to develop our budget on, on looking at some of the actuals this year. We're hoping that because our participation is up so greatly now, a lot of the kids that were thinking, oh, I don't like school lunch. So it wasn't worth paying for, or they were always deterred to pay, that a lot of them are going to come back and like, hey, school lunch isn't as bad as everybody tries, you know, that perception isn't there. And we know that's true because they're eating it every day, you know, sometimes trying to come to the lunch twice. So, um, nothing really supports the, we think we're providing a, a pretty good meal that our, even our high school students like, other than the participation rates that we had. So even if we go to a pre-COVID level, we could see more kids participating than we did. One, because of growth.
Are you budgeting based on pre-COVID for?
Pre-COVID with some increases.
Okay.
But the good thing about, I mean, nutrition is self, you know, internal service is self-funded.
They have to depend on, yeah.
Yeah. So a lot of, a lot of their direct cost is the meals and the food expense. So if we're not serving the meals, we're going to save money on the food side. I did include, we didn't have this in the past, this unfunded contingency, which is basically saying, if the money's available, we have that one point five million. And that's to say, if we do end up having a lot of growth, we've got some wiggle room without having to go back to the county and ask for an additional appropriation, which by the way, we're going to have to do this year because our numbers are so high. We're getting, we're getting money from the government, but our expenses are so high to pay for all these, all this food. We don't have enough budget. We got the money, we just have to get the appropriation from the county. And so that's coming in the next month or two. We'll be sending that request over to the Board of Supervisors, which we've had to do in the past for like workers' comp where we've gotten close to that. And so it shouldn't be a problem. I'm just letting you know now that because of that growth, those are the sort of things we're running into. So I'm trying to, to cover that a little bit by working in that unfunded contingency.
Two, if we were to centralize some of our food storage and distribution, would that save us money over the long run?
In the long run, yes.
It would be just a huge investment upfront, I realize that.
It would, but it would also limit some of the frustration that a lot of our nutrition staff experience with supply chain interruptions to some of the recipes that they're trying to put together for some of their meals. So for example, if you've put together a menu and you scoped it out over the next ten days, and then all of a sudden you don't get broccoli, to make it an FDA-compliant meal, you have to substitute that with another ingredient, which you may or may not have access to. And the, the cafeteria manager is having to figure that out. And, and if we were distributing the meal kits and that we were the hub of the meal kits, we could make sure that the suppliers were delivering to us at one location, assembling the meal kits and sending them out to schools. And we could, we could figure out that problem centrally and not put that on the cafeteria manager to do that.
The managers are doing this like daily. It's not even like they're doing it once a week.
The food goes straight to the schools as opposed to one central location.
It does. It does. And you need a refrigerated facility and you, and it, and there are some requirements. Uh, but you are talking about like warehouse space, not necessarily, um, not necessarily office space or anything along those, those, those needs. But, you know, you're, we're, we're a school district that has nearly forty campuses. And so, you know, we're kind of big enough where that makes sense. If we were a school system that had three campuses, it wouldn't make sense. So for a Fred City, no, that doesn't make sense. For a Stafford, it does make sense to centralize a lot of services because you can capture some economy.
But we don't have any, a location for that.
Not, not.
So the, the next biggest thing on school nutrition that I want to point out, and I'll have this together the next meeting, is finalizing an adjustment to the pay scale for nutrition. It doesn't impact our operating fund because nutrition has the funds. We're doing something for the rest of this year, but that's not permanent. That was to try to relieve some of the pressure this year and to try to build up the staff for next year. But we want to increase our scale more than five percent for nutrition workers because frankly, it's like sickening what we're doing there. So, um, you'll see that there's a bigger increase than just five percent right now in that salary line. That's a rough number, but I'll bring you better information on what that looks like. I'm working with Patrick. We're kind of doing a, um, a, a, instead of doing a full-blown compensation study for all service scale, we're at least concentrating right now on the nutrition workers and cafeteria managers.
So this, a salaries director supervisor increases by a hundred thousand, is that a new position that's added in that? Or is, that can't just be?
No, it's, it's not a new, um.
Why did it go up a hundred?
We did add a new field manager to split up the growth. So I, I think it's going to be, and it's not a cafeteria manager, so I think it's, they're in that line.
It's a new person then?
It is a new, a new person, um, last, last year, but it wasn't in the budget per se. But I'll, I'll look into it.
And that was one, that was part of my question as well, is how many are we talking about in each of these? Is this one for school, one, no?
So cafeteria manager, assistant manager, there's one for school. The nutrition worker depends on the size of the school and number of meals they serve.
High school versus elementary.
Yeah, figuring it out. Um, I have two more questions.
Yep.
Just going down here, first of all, just as a side note, I read clothing allowance and wondered why we were dressing our food. That's besides the point. So I see, you know, the lines in here, we've got stipend other, are, are we getting rid of these then in two thou, in twenty-three?
So those, we did a, a stipend during the year last year that was funded by our Health Benefits Fund. So that was a one-time thing that we had.
That was like an extra money?
Employees received a stipend in twenty-one.
Okay, 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 that makes sense.
So that's what's in the actual line.
Um, and then my last question is retire, what is retirement matching? What does that mean?
Um, so it's, I think it's, it is, that line, it's a little probably misworded. It's part of our VRS. There's different segments of the way our VRS breaks up, but I'll double check.
This is a special incentive we have for nutritional workers. It's a very small percent, but in order to encourage them to, to stay with us, we put a certain percentage. I, I think it's like one or, one or two percent. We add that to what, to their retirement fund.
Oh, so it's literally like, like their retirement package and we're adding money? Okay, that's, that's fine. I ju, it just didn't make sense the way it was worded?
Well, it, it's only in nutrition and we can do it because nutrition is self-funded.
Right, right, right.
Nutrition budget is completely separate from the schools.
Right.
And what's interesting is that not only do they pay the workers and they pay, you know, all these expenses, they actually have in the past paid for improvements to our kitchens. You know, like they'll buy a hood for a.
Or freezer, walk-in freezers.
Freezers, you know, because, because they have, you know, they had extra funding, they would pay for things that really should have been our responsibility as a school district. But that was an incentive to recruit and retain. It's a real small percentage, but, but it's, it's been something I think they appreciate.
Every little bit counts. I think every little bit counts.
Maya has a question.
Oh, just the, um, the non-contract cafe worker. The increase is at zero and the, um, like, why are there no?
So non, so that's if we have to pay a cafeteria worker, um, when it says non-contract, so it's basically additional hours on top of their regular salary. So if they go into overtime or just above and beyond their contracted amount, it goes in that non-contract line. And so that can vary year to year. We try to line it up with what our actuals were, what we're projecting. And I'm gonna.
Does this, um, does this budget give us more flexibility, like in the high school for like snack bars and, and things where, or, or do we not have those?
Yeah, really what we need for the flexibility of the staffing to do that. So Brian is like chomping at the bit to do some of that stuff, but he can't do it while he's down fifty staff members because they can barely keep up with, if they're taking somebody off the line to do something else, it means they're going to get, their lines are going to run slower, so they're trying to put all the resources to.
Maybe next year when we aren't serving as many meals.
So there'll be something coming on the agenda at the next meeting preview, is an incentive for the.
Yes.
To help us.
Yeah, and it was on for information this past week.
We can take action on it.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, so I'm going to jump to health benefits because there were some, you know, questions on that when we were talking about it. Many of you know that we have very benefit, or, uh, favorable health benefit trends for several years. And I would say we still are seeing that. Some of it, we're just kind of catching up with the times a little bit that, um, the FY twenty-one, our actuals on there, and we also did internally, it's still really early, but trying to do a projection for FY twenty-two, especially for health benefits can be kind of up and down based on the season. But, um, overall on our, in our health benefits, looking at about a one point eight million, but you'll see our employer contribution, um, wow. So previously, we basically said, we budgeted really, really closely and said, alright, we've got a reserve in our health benefits fund. Well, we took a lot of that reserve and moved it into our OPEB trust fund, uh, which is a, which is a preferred method adopted.
If you could just give a quick synopsis, this is OPEB. You'll, you'll hear this occasionally.
Yeah.
Other post-employment benefits.
Yeah. Other, so, um, our current employees, eventually, you know, they're going to retire and we're going to have to provide health insurance for them when they're retired.
Well, we choose to do that. We are the only school district in the Commonwealth of Virginia that provides free, uh, health insurance for people that have been with us, what, thirty years or something?
Yeah, we were a hundred percent reimbursed if they've been here thirty years.
A year, but, you know, our employees have appreciated it.
So five years ago, we, um, rebid out our health insurance, changed the, the plans a little bit. And it's been very favorable. All we've really, the gist of that was, instead of encouraging people to just go to the ER every time they had a boo-boo, it's really encouraging them to go to a patient first or something and get checked out first, which is a lot cheaper for us and for them. So changed the plans a little bit to encourage that. And, you know, got rid of like the old Cadillac plans that was pushed down, uh, that we were kind of, you know, forced to get rid of actually. So for several years, we were, you know, budgeting for thirty-two million dollars in health benefit expenditures and it was twenty-eight million, twenty-seven million. So we built up a very, very healthy reserve. So a couple of years ago, we did, um, actually two years consecutive, we did, um, a partial, uh, partial for the year, but we did a premium holiday for staff, so instead of charging them for insurance, we, we made it free. Did that two years ago. We did it last year as well, which is why when you look at this employee contribution, it's only two point two million dollars. That number really should be closer to about six point three with our growth. That actual number is low because we gave it free to them for like nine months or seven months, whatever it ended up being. I don't have the exact number. So, long story short is, we are seeing, um, some growth in our, in our actual expenditure for, um, health insurance. So the actuals in twenty-one were twenty-eight, were projected to be higher than that. This is actually a five percent increase in health insurance costs. It's still pretty low, like industry average is fifteen, twenty percent. So we're still doing okay, and I'm still able to budget that pretty closely because, um, we know we've still got a reserve out there that if we need to, if we go over budget in a given year, I've got a healthy fund balance and health benefits fund to cover that. Alright, workers' comp, another one that we've seen increases, um, more recently, one, we're growing. And just seeing more incidents for injuries for, that qualify for workers' comp. So our FY twenty-one actuals was almost, it was one point one million. We only had budgeted seven hundred and forty-five thousand. Also know we had some very specific events that happened in, in twenty-one that kind of drove that number up. So hoping it doesn't, hoping it doesn't continue to grow at that rate, obviously. But we do need to, to budget higher than the seven forty-four. So we've got three hundred and fifty-two and that's a combination of our, I think it was a two hundred thousand dollar increase in the operating fund, but then our other funds contributing to that as well. Fleet services, so our fleet services, our mechanics, they will do work for our, um, our maintenance, our school buses and maintenance department, and they also do some shared services with the county where they provide services to the sheriff's, sheriff's office and fire and rescue. Some more of their, what we'd call like white fleet. They're not working on fire trucks, um, but they do on, on more of the sheriff, deputy vehicles. The sheriff's office doesn't have to bring every vehicle to us. They sometimes supplement with, they could go to Jiffy Lube or whatever, and we're trying to encourage more of them actually to come to us and, uh, so we can actually, you know, we can do it cheaper. It's really just putting it in a, establishing a, a mode of doing it quickly and, and making it more efficient for the deputies. So, um, the big thing I wanted to point out in the fleet fund, it's another, it's another fund that has been susceptible to a lot of changes because of COVID. When you're not running buses every day and you're only running them half as much as you did over the last couple of years, they don't require as much maintenance. We're not going through as many tires and we're not doing as much as that. So they saw some pretty sharp declines for two years. We're hoping we can, it's going to, this year, we're, you know, picking it back up and they're definitely staying busy. And we're also changing some business models there. They did add a new fleet director, um, in fleet. It was part of, um, the budget process last year. I can't remember if it was like a part-time or some, but anyways, um, this does include the, the new fleet director, which we desperately needed. We needed to, one, get the fleet department off of our transportation director's deck. And so we now have the full-time fleet director who is, um, making some impact down there and making some changes.
Have we done anything about correcting the salaries for the mechanics and fleet services, right? They've come and met with folks and so I see minus point six five percent. Is that?
Yeah, and so some of that is because of turnover.
Okay.
But no, right now, um, included in this is not anything other than the regular five percent. So we took our current staff, you know, so you'll see a change because FY twenty-two budget was placed on the staff, based on the staff that we had then. FY twenty-three is based on the staff we have now. If we have a vacancy, it's filled at the, at a lower rate than the people that left. So it's not always going to be a straight five percent increase for some of those. But no, long story short is, right now, we're just looking at the five percent with the emphasis on revisiting that next year. Right now, we've got.
Is there any chance we could visit it a little bit this year? Just because they really have come multiple times and we have talked about it and, and. These are highly competitive jobs and if we aren't paying enough, we can't get them.
Um, yeah, we can take a look.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't know if the rest of the board agrees or not. I, that's just, I'm just like, just would like to have a, I mean, it can't be that many employees.
Well, and also we can look at, you know, how they've, how they've changed in the past. What have, what have we done and is there something, since they came to talk to us?
Right. But it's also sense if we do our, our mechanical work in-house, it's, it's overall savings to us anyway. So it makes sense if we could invest more in the salaries that we would have better, better capability, better capacity.
So let's, let's look at what changes have been in those salaries and say, what, how many years back is there, three?
Yeah.
I think the past three years.
And is there?
Sure. Will do.
Okay.
Well, and I think part of it has kind of been a challenge too because of the fact that we did not, I, I mean, we used our buses, but not to the extent that we have been this year and of course coming forward because, you know, the, of, of COVID as far as like the total usage of those staff that we had. So I'm sure losing some staff in that picture, but definitely needing to be attractive to gaining.
So on that note too then, when you were talking before about the non-contract workers here, it sounded almost like an overtime fund for things? And so we have non-contract mechanics. Are they folks, are, is that the same concept? Or are these people that we have to call in because we have a short staff or whatever, right, like?
Yeah, it's going to most likely be our existing folks.
So we're, we're.
And it could be that, hey, in order to catch up on, um, some service tickets that are behind, we need you to work a night shift or work additional hours or something.
But we have overtime wages, so what's the difference between?
Yeah. That was my next question.
Wage and the overtime wage.
Yeah, so I tried to consolidate those, which you'll see, if you're looking at the overtime wages.
Because there's a dash at the overtime. That's what it is.
So you put it in another case.
So most of our work weeks are based off for the. So most of our work weeks are based off, for the non-exempt folks are on thirty-seven and a half hour work week.
Okay.
So from thirty-seven and a half hour to forty, it's straight time. Anything over forty is that time and a half, which is considered overtime.
So, so they're still getting paid.
Yeah.
At an overtime rate.
They're getting.
But, cause we, cause your overtime wages has a, has a dash on it. Like we're not giving overtime wages anymore. Is that because we hope we never have to?
We still are. We just roll it. I just record it when we budget it. We just record it all in our regular hourly wage line. I don't break it out by overtime.
Okay, so that's, so that's the clarification. That's why it's about non-contract. Okay, cool. Thank you.
So, the, the biggest thing, because we came, uh, Dr. Warner, I believe, asked about the, um, fueling station. So, for the last couple of years, we actually had money set aside to use our fund balance that was in the fleet services fund to, um, add an additional fueling station up in the north. The thought was we had built up a fund balance over the years. We were gonna use that to pay for this fueling station. We have the designing work done. The last two years have been hard on the fleet services fund, and I don't wanna deplete that fund balance because they've depleted it on their own to an extent, um, because they've been operating at a loss for the last couple of years. Um, now, hopefully, as we get back to full steam this year and then next year, we're gonna see that start to replenish. But if I, if I build that fueling station right now at a rough cost of eight hundred thousand dollars, their reserve that they're gonna have in that fund balance in that fleet services fund is gonna, um, start to be about nothing.
Let me bake sale.
Yeah.
Chris, I have a question on these bottom lines.
Uh-huh.
Is this, um, you know, is eighty-one low? Is that because of COVID?
Where, where are you at?
I'm just looking at this.
We're gonna get to it.
Are we still on fleet services or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The three, the three million in, in FY twenty-one and looking at FY twenty-three, we're four point six. So it's like.
That's what I was explaining that it was very low.
That's, that's COVID.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we're, but we're still, we're, we're actually lower in twenty-three. That's a significant difference. It looks like about ten percent from twenty, oh, twenty-two.
So, I did have a funny contingency in this year of five hundred thousand, so that if we end up doing more than what we're budgeting, we've already, cause once again, it's the same thing as our nutrition fund that, it's an internal service fund, so it's funded. So, um, we're projecting less than fleet service charges mainly at the county level. You'll see that we were budgeting one point two million at the county. We're not coming anywhere near that number, so I had to adjust it down. So.
So if you take that five hundred out, you're not that far off from twenty-one. Or maybe, no, yeah, I guess you are. It's three, three to four million, it's one third. What are we looking at as our actual for twenty-two on the fleet service charge to county?
Um.
Is that actual, that's the actual?
About, I think, six or seven hundred thousand.
Oh, okay.
I, I have to go back and look. We were, we did it a little bit in detail the past week. I just don't remember exactly. But we're, we wanna increase that because we think we can work with them and, and, um, we've been really trying to build that, um, connection back up with them so that they bring their cars to us. Because we've got a bay dedicated, we can do the work. It's about turning it out quickly so they come to us instead of just going to Jiffy Lube.
Right.
So we're really changing our model at least to be more of a, you gotta treat it like a for-profit, right? So that.
Yeah.
You want people to come to us. Our buses is what they're working on non-stop. Uh, the sheriff's department and the county side, that's where we've gotta make it favorable for them to come to us. So that, you know, we build these salaries and we build the workload based on doing that work. So we need them to come to us. But, we recognize that we need to make it a situation where they wanna come to us and it's easier for them versus just stopping at a Jiffy Lube and waiting there for two hours.
Another vote for the bus lounge.
And a house in there.
Yeah, yeah, because technically the deputies could, you know.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that Jeff is, you know, he's working with those deputies. Like, hey, you know, they come in, they do their work and he's got a smaller room than this, you know, that's like a conference room, half the size of this probably, but, he's like inviting the deputies in and having them sit there and do the work, um, you know, do work while the bu, while their, um, fleet's being worked on too.
But we don't even have, he doesn't even have space for parks.
Yeah.
And stuff.
And put, um, put wifi on the bus and let them lounge.
So Jeff, Mr. Jeter comes with us with a lot of experience and so he's making some changes that we really weren't doing before when we had one person trying to oversee two departments like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's great.
I really love it.
So having somebody dedicated to that is helping tremendously.
Yeah, clean house.
And we're hoping. Alright, so that's it for the other funds, and we're like running out of time. We can talk about something that's really important. So I'm gonna, any other questions on budget? Can I turn it over to?
I'm in favor of turning it over so we hear about growth management strategies.
Yeah, alright. Lionel, it's all you.
Alright.
Go Lionel. Bring your daughter. Oh wait, I said that a lot.
Yeah, they're all.
You said that a lot.
We don't have this.
No.
Down.
We'll get it for you though.
This is for the next meeting.
Is it due? Yeah, I'll see.
Oh my god, I meant to say.
Not for me.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. White.
Alright, alright. Chris has time to take over here.
Pick it up.
Okay, so. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The planning team. I'm Lionel White. This is John Anderson. Uh, this morning, we give you a presentation on growth management strategies. And this presentation, for those of you that were in last year, is a follow-up to a meeting we had back in June eighth where staff said we would get back to the board with some options to relieve crowding next year. Alright, so this is sort of following up that meeting. So first, we're gonna walk you through, I'm gonna walk you through past, present, future enrollment projections. Then I'm gonna show you some current and projected seat availability maps. Then I'll move into how do we manage growth? What's, what's our toolbox? What tools do we have at our disposal? And then I'll pass off to John where he'll get into CIP and long-term planning, and then there'll be discussion. Alright, so, growth, we've heard a lot about it today. Growth is good. So this, this lays out our growth since twenty-ten. So just to explain really quickly here, the gray bars show growth from two thousand and ten to twenty-twenty. That's sort of our past enrollment. And over that span of time, we, we grew twenty-seven hundred students. So that's the past. You'll notice between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, there was a drop in enrollment, of course, COVID. Interestingly enough, in our presently, we're right back where we left off. So between.
The structure is exactly the same.
So between last year and this year, enrollment grew three percent, which made up for the two percent loss in enrollment the year prior because of COVID. So we're back on pace. And if you look at the slope of this line, you see that we're, we're, projections are suggesting we're gonna grow about twenty-two hundred students over the next five years. So between present and twenty-twenty-six, twenty-two hundred kids. And then if we look out to the ten-year mark, uh, that's gonna be fifty-eight hundred students total, and that's K-12 students. So, when we say we're growing, that's, that's what we're anticipating.
Lionel, you said that and my eyes, we started to literally twitch. It just was like an automatic distress response.
Okay, let, let me tell you. When I first came on the board, we were growing a thousand students a year for, for a number of years. We opened a new school every year.
Oh my god.
So that was back.
I know.
In the old days.
Yeah, and so we're not at that pace, just to be clear. We're not growing a thousand.
But that, that's good. That's good.
All about six hundred.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, but we're still growing.
Which is still.
It's a fair split of the school year.
Well, quarters of an elementary. Wide water's six hundred and ten students. It's, we're growing the wide water every year.
Alright, so now I'm gonna jump into our, so based on our projections, uh, you know, we have that checklist chart. We see the projections, you see numbers and colors.
Right.
I'm a very visual person, so it, I think it's really good to see like numbers on maps so that you can see like what they mean next to each other. So for example, when you look at this map, big picture, green is good, yellow is caution, red is a problem. Okay? So, we have currently September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, that's what we call our current enrollment. That's our official count. At the elementary level, we have three crowded schools, which were Park Ridge, Rocky Run, and Conway. And you can see the seat deficits. So what we did was we took the projections, we looked at the program capacities of the schools to, uh, calculate how many seats we need at the schools.
Hey, can I ask a quick question? Rocky Run, is that with or without the trailers?
Uh, Rocky Run does not include relocatable classrooms. And so, yeah, for the, so yes, to answer your question, it is not included, inclusive of the relos. So.
Are any of those class reduction schools?
Uh, in terms of the schools?
Yes.
I'll, I'll double check, but I believe so, yes.
So my question with Rocky Run is just, so you're saying that we're down sixty-two seats. Is that just looking at the building and not including the fact that there are trailers at Rocky Run right now?
That's correct. So I believe that at Rocky Run, we have four relocatable classrooms. So I, I, I try not to use the term trailers because it, to me, it's just.
Okay, sorry. The, so to relocatable classrooms, are they included, so, so if I took those relocatable classrooms away, would there be sixty-two missing seats? Or would there be a hundred and twenty missing seats?
Oh no, if you took them away, there'd be sixty-two missing seats.
Okay.
So with the relocatable classrooms, depending on which, the grade of the class that you put in there.
Right.
So let's just use an average of twenty-five students per relocatable. That would provide a hundred seats to offset crowding at Rocky Run, which this year, as a fact, has sixty-two seats short. So those relocatables fix the problem this year at Rocky Run.
Okay.
On paper.
Okay.
Alright.
No, Conway and Rocky Run are both Title I schools.
Correct.
So.
And Park Ridge too, isn't it? No, okay.
But, but with those Title I schools, they're actually have, um, smaller capacity because we, we in effect count less seats available in those classrooms.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Right, so.
So if we actually put those classrooms at the same student number that we have in our other schools, it would not look as negative in, in those. It's because they have, they have actually smaller classes than say the Park Ridge.
And I think that's why Conway and Park Ridge are not, I think their enrollment is much closer together, but Park Ridge is not a Title I school and Conway is.
Gotcha. Yep. But this is the difference between program capacity and design capacity and why it's more relevant for elementary school.
But it's really not program. Program is where we have a special, I don't know if class size reduction, is that a program?
Well, it, it, it impacts the program capacity because the, the overall program of the school is class size reduction because of poverty. And that's one element of it, but you also may have a special education program that also may constrict it. So it, it's trying to take into account all of the factors versus taking every classroom and dividing by twenty-five.
Right, but that is our choice as a school system to reduce the class sizes.
Correct.
And just to be clear, with that K-three class size reduction, that only affects grades K through three. And typically, it'll pull down, uh, the class size, maybe two students. It'll, so instead of having a class of, uh, twenty-five, it may reduce it down to twenty-three.
Well, and it depends. It's a slide of scale.
It could go a lot lower.
Yeah, it's a sliding scale.
It could get lower.
Yeah, it depends on the economic, the percent of economic disadvantage of the school. So the more economically disadvantaged.
Like Moncur and Moncur is the, the next tier down.
But then that means that does, well, I'm asking, I shouldn't say doesn't it mean, but does it mean then that it balloons your fourth and fifth grade classes potentially? If you have the K through three.
Well, we have class size, so there are class size maxims. So we have sort of our.
There's a bar. They can't, we have a stop dam for them.
Our staffing standards. And then there's sort of the state standard of the maximum that you're allowed to have. So, um, there are standards. They control how big a class gets. And, uh, and then when a class does get too big, then we have to pull in a new teacher. But, I wanted to keep on moving with this. I think we get the idea that we have three crowded schools, and the reason why we have Hartwood and Hampton Oaks on here, they're in the darker yellow, so they're on the radar. So, for, so when the school is a little bit crowded, it's not a bad thing because we understand that with our program capacity, there's a little bit of fluff in there, just a little bit on seats. And also, we know that each year, um, sometimes you'll have a larger fifth grade cohort and leaving, and then the smaller kindergarten cohort's coming in, so we don't panic and go, oh, let's add something there. Because it just may be a temporary blip. It may not be something that's a, a, a long-term trend.
But I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to interrupt, but I am interrupting. But Hampton Oaks is still a class size reduction school, even though it's not a Title I. Is that correct? When does that, that rollover end?
Should be next year, the year after.
Isn't it three years? Well, it's, is it still, is it still a class size reduction school?
It is. It is.
It is. So that thirty-one is, is, is based on a class size reduction for, when you take that away.
It should be fine.
It's, it's not going to be that negative.
Yeah, it should be fine. And, yep, I'll move on. So that was current. Now let's look at what's projected for next school year. So next school year, we're projecting that we'll have four crowded schools and two schools on the radar. Uh, we see that next year, Hartwood flipped into the red. So we have Hartwood, Rocky Run, but remember, Rocky Run has four relos. They got a hundred seats. Rocky Run's okay. They, they're projected to have a deficit of seventy seats. So they're okay. Conway projected for a deficit of eighty-five seats, and then of course, Park Ridge, a hundred and eighty-two seat deficit. A lot of that at Park Ridge, we know, is because of the Embry Mill subdivision has been grown. And so that's why you see sort of, you see that number sort of popping out there. So now, we're gonna look sorta in the midterm. So when we talk about next year's projection, that's sort of short-term. We get five years out, that's in the midterm. We do a ten-year projection. So five years out, you can see more red on the map. Remember we said red is, you know, red's bad kinda, yellow, eh, we watching it, green's good. Lot more red, a lot more growth.
I know.
Park Ridge, Conway, Rocky Run, Hartwood, Stafford and Fallen. Right, and then still on the radar, Hampton Oaks, Barrett and Moncur. So this map clearly shows, you know, over the next five years, we're growing and not just in one place, but in both north and south.
Yeah.
So in terms of where we need seats, it's not just in one spot. Alright, so now let's talk about our growth management toolbox. So we have some tools at our disposal, um, to fix the problem. One tool is boundary changes. And boundary changes, that's where you pretty much use the existing space you have at another school. You use what you have better. And ideally with a boundary change, you wanna have a school that's next to another school. One school has seats open and the other school has a seat deficit. And it just makes sense to shift enrollment between the two schools. So that's boundary change. Another option is relocating a program. That's where you move a program out of a building because maybe it frees up two or three or four classrooms. And maybe that helps alleviate crowding. Another option is relocatable classrooms. We physically bring trailers. Out to the site.
Thank you, Lionel.
We bring them out to the site. And, you know, it's a great option. It's a, it's another option out there. Obviously a little more expensive than if you shifted enrollment between two schools.
Temporary flexible stay.
Correct. It's temporary.
They're also called learning cottages.
Yes.
I like that better.
I like that too.
Are they decorated like a cottage?
No.
No.
With pink walls and no carpet, no.
We could just use school buses.
Hey!
Oh god.
They gotta wait about a year and a half before you get them.
No, we're gonna use your recycled ones.
So next we have additions to existing school buildings, and then we have reconstruction. That's where you build a building, you knock down the existing, build another building right on the same site. And then last is you build a new school on the new site. So you probably noticed that these are sort of going from lower cost to more expensive cost, uh, in this list.
Thank you, Lionel.
You're welcome. Okay, so.
You know, those buses could really go on the road. They could go on field trips. Talk about a relocatable. Sorry.
Oh, no worries. I like the idea. Relocatable, we can make some relocatable buses.
And learning experiences.
Pick the kids up.
Yeah.
The whole thing.
Got it.
Okay, so short-term strategies for elementary schools. Short-term meaning next year. Okay, one option, cause Hartwood we have projected crowding, is to reassign seven planning units, which, that has eighty students from Hartwood, and we would move them into Brent. And so what you see here on the map, the hatch line is the area that we're proposing, that consideration be given, to shifting into Brent. that consideration be given, to shifting into Brent. So if we were to make that change, what does that do to enroll, to capacity at the schools? Hartwood would be at ninety-two percent, Brent would be at ninety-eight percent. Three years, so now looking out into the future, three years from now, Hartwood would be at ninety-nine percent, and Brent would be at a hundred and one percent, the six-seat, six-seat deficit, so it would be in the yellow, it's not in the red. Also Brent at ninety-eight percent, uh, it's not, it's not yellow yet. So I mean, it's, it's close.
But Brent also doesn't have the restrictions that Hartwood has because of the water, the water.
That's correct, because of the water sewer.
And also just the design of the school too.
Right.
May I also ask, do either of those schools have programs in them that could be relocated? Or is it, is the only advan, is the only thing that we can do is send planning units elsewhere?
Um, I will definitely have a conversation with the principal to double check.
Okay.
Let me get back to you with, get back to you with an answer on it.
Okay.
Not, not enough to substantially impact.
No, but I'm just wondering if like, and I'm not even more concerned with the next year. I'm looking at the, the three and the five year.
Right.
Uh, if we get hung up, is there a, a program that would help them in the three and the five year, if it was relocated somewhere else? That's what I'm curious about. In the short-term, I would figure yes, but in the long-term, would that, if there's nothing there to move, then that's the answer.
So then five years after the boundary change, sort of in the midterm, we see that Hartwood would be at a hundred and four percent, which makes it in the yellow. Uh, Brent would be over capacity at a hundred and eight percent. Now, remember with boundary changes, one thing we look at is neighboring schools. So although, um, Brent would be crowded, Rock Hill, which is contiguous to Brent, has a couple of hundred seats open. So there is a possibility to do a boundary change in the future that could fix, if the projections hold up, there is a boundary change that could fix that problem with Brent to alleviate crowding there. So there are moves that we can make.
So, so my question then, with the variability of moving through the years being also that we would still continue to seek alternate locations to build new schools or capacity and all that stuff. So this is projected just on current livelihood, nothing changes per se. But your growth changes, you know what I mean? But we don't have any extra schools, we don't have anything like this. This is our remedy. At this point.
What is the date on our CIP for the next elementary school? It's like ten years, isn't it ridiculous?
So, gosh, you, we, we are going to get to that for sure as another solution, but, but it's an, it's important to point out that the, the strategy here involves, is something that we don't particularly prefer, which is creating dominoes, where we're moving students to then move students.
But this is kind of not.
And that's, and it's problematic.
Because it's, it's five years, all of which are encompassing of one kid, like one child's full school career, right?
So you could potentially be moving that child if they start in kindergarten. Am I misunderstanding?
No, because, because with this plan, you're moving kids from Hartwood to Brent, and then in five years, you would be moving the other end of the Brent.
It's not the same case.
Okay.
It's not the same kids, it would be different.
Got it, got it.
I just have a question. Um, this might be a, a silly question. So why not, uh, restructure that now as well? Or would, or would it mess up, like moving kids already now, that you would move into Rock Hill in five years? Why wouldn't you switch that over now?
And create a capacity in Brent that they can grow into?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Why, why wouldn't you do that, as opposed to waiting to five years?
Well, I mean, that's something we could do. And so this is a boundary change option, and it can be adjusted.
Any way we want.
Any way you want, you want, yeah.
And always why I'm asking that is because there are a lot of families that are like mine, that have like twenty-five million kids. And so it's just much nicer for them to all funnel, because by that time, I know, I know the teachers, I know the parents, and it just creates a more cohesive community unit. So I'm just wondering.
You have third, fourth, fifth graders at Brent right now, that you're talking about moving to Rock Hill.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm saying you're gonna have that same problem. If you're either doing it to families now, or you're doing it to a different set of families later, but somebody will be impacted regardless of which way you do it.
I understand that, but there's like, when you talk about redistricting in the community, it doesn't matter if it's not affecting, let's just say, a Quiet Harbor family. We're like, oh gosh. You know what I'm saying? Because you never know what's gonna happen. Whereas if you did it now, and you don't have to do it again in five years, or you might, you know what I mean? You just never know. But I'm just saying, then you don't have that upheaval. I don't know, I was just, this is what I was saying.
The upheaval happens once, not twice. If you just move one set now, they're the ones being affected. The least you can move is, is the best.
The least effective number.
And, and we don't know exactly where we are. I mean, Lionel's excellent, you know, projections, but who would have projected COVID? I mean, you know, we don't know. So it's, it's, for me, it's the least disruptive.
Yep, okay.
Well, and, and, and I'm just gonna say, the obvious here at the table, the only people that have been involved in redistricting is Sarah and Trish. Liza and I've been through the rest of the wringer, but definitely not.
Yes, this was, they were saving this for us until you guys got here.
Until math, redistricting was the most difficult thing I've had to do. Yes, that's what, that's every, that's what everybody told us when we got on the board. Wait till redistricting.
I mean, I'm a parent who got redistricted. Yeah, I know, it sucked. I was at every meeting you guys had.
I did too.
Why did it happen? Yeah.
Thank you Lionel.
No, you're welcome, because we have another option to show you. This is Park Ridge. Uh, this is a boundary change option for Park Ridge. It would involve three schools. It would involve Park Ridge, Winding Creek and Garrisonville. Uh, this scenario would reassign three planning units. Let's see if I can turn this thing on. Three planning units, this is Park Ridge, they would go to Winding Creek. And the needs planning units, here, it's five in total, would move from Winding Creek into Garrisonville. So with this, uh, plan, if it were to happen, with the, uh, next year, Garrisonville would be at ninety-four percent, Winding Creek would be at eighty-nine percent, and Park Ridge would be at a hundred and three percent. But let me point this out. This is the boundary change fix. Without doing a boundary change, Park Ridge would have been at a hundred and twenty-two percent. So this is a significant improvement, and it's a way to use our existing seats better.
Right, so just for, you know, maps are one thing. So is that Embry Mill, that's part of Embry Mill?
This is a piece of Embry Mill, yes.
That would go to Winding Creek instead of Park Ridge. And then that's Liberty Knowles?
Yes.
That would go over.
Well, that's, uh, we have Augustine North, and we have Stowe, Amy Clay and Berkshire.
Oh, okay, okay, I, I see.
So you're, you're splitting a subdivision?
Can you, I was gonna say, can you?
Embry Mill is large.
No, I mean Augustine North.
Augustine North is a, its own subdivision.
Wallpole, I thought it's off Wallpole, right?
Yeah.
Embry Mill, I mean.
Embry Mill's already split.
See, one, one thing we have to consider in, and not just here, but with the other ones, is these feeder patterns. Because right now.
So it's already split.
Yeah, these are, these are different feeder patterns. And it's, it's just something that I, I'm, I'm concerned about, moving people into a school, that they're gonna be the only ones going to a different middle school.
But wait a minute, she just said that there, part of Embry Mill is in one elementary school, part of Embry Mill is in another middle school.
Section one of Embry Mill kept, um, Winding Creek as part of the redistricting, and then everybody else goes to Park Ridge. And the everybody else is where we're still growing, which is why Park Ridge keeps getting dumped on and dumped on and dumped on. But that section, that was the first section, established households, they're not really growing and like, you know, maybe one or two as families get bigger and smaller, but we're not adding to the back ends, because Embry Mill is still adding on the back end. And that's why Park Ridge is getting crazy.
So does, does that take away?
So if we pull some of those and put them over to Winding Creek, it's still gonna be a split neighborhood, it's just the balance will be different.
So you, what you're saying is that the small portion of Embry Mill that's at Winding Creek would potentially get larger, Embry Mill students that would be coming into Winding Creek. Okay.
And what does that do to those, uh, rooms that we had previously for the preschool at Garrisonville? Does that fill them?
Well, their seats are, are located in the number.
No, 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 I'm just looking. We had, we had a special section of rooms there. We had like five or six preschool classes at Garrisonville. And when we were doing the, the last redistricting, we knew that North Star was gonna soon be, you know, at or above capacity. So the thought was if we needed to expand North Star and we didn't build the next building with the addition, we were gonna move them up to Garrisonville. So does that still leave those classrooms available?
Let me, let me, let me just double check on that and get back to you.
That might have been before your time.
It was a little bit, but I'll find out.
There, there's a, there's a indoor courtyard there that they, they had as the, um, preschool playground, and that, the rooms all went around. That was the thought. And if North Star, we're, if North Star isn't growing as we thought it would, then.
Or if it's good in the next, for the next five years, then we can look.
The problem with our early childhood education though, is because COVID has such impacted, um, enrollment so badly, and it still hasn't recovered, that at some point, those numbers should recover, if we ever, if we ever get out of COVID.
So there could be the same kind of bomb that we saw with our regular enrollment of the correction, but. I wanna see Conway, quite frankly.
Okay. Uh, but Stowe, Amy Clay and Berkshire is going where again? Those are, those are from Winding Creek to Garrisonville?
Sure, so.
Yeah.
Stowe, Amy Clay, uh, and Berkshire are here, and they're currently at Winding Creek.
Yes.
They would be reassigned to Garrisonville, which is, of course, we looked at contiguous.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Planning units. And this is, um, Augustine, the entire community, so that wouldn't be split, would be reassigned here to Garrisonville. If I could take one second, I hate to flip back, but I just wanna show you something. So let's look at, um, let's look at next year's seats totals. So remember we said red's bad, green's good? How many, look at Garrisonville, how many seats are open at Garrisonville?
Over two hundred.
So essentially, what we're doing is we're shifting students to where we have capacity.
Yeah.
Just to simplify this.
I thought it still gave room for preschool.
Yeah, it's, it's in room to shift from Park Ridge to Garrisonville, so we don't have to do the dominoes. Because we're basically moving people out of Winding Creek, so we can make room. So we're, we're doing two moves. Is there a way to do one?
Not really, because the Park Ridge, and we talked about this a year ago, but I think Park Ridge, the school is literally at Garrisonville. And so because of that, I mean, you wouldn't wanna take.
That would mean that Embry Mill kids and could be going to three different elementary schools too, I guess.
Yeah, so it's just simpler to, uh, the plan that staff has proposed is the simplest plan to get this done. We can't obviously control where schools are located. I can't control the boundaries, you guys do, but I have no control over what they were in the past. And my job is to try to make it as simple and easy as possible, given the restrictions that, that, that we have.
For the short-term, until we build a new school.
Well, but.
Because it's all turned red, and you gotta build a new school.
But we don't want kids.
We're also talking about Hartwood needing a new buildings, like a new thing, so we're not, so we have these other, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we're gonna get there.
The variables on all of this.
Yeah, we're gonna get to that. It is, and that's the long-term.
But even after five years, Garrisonville, at that point, said we still house the.
Yeah, so five years out, based on our projections, we're looking at Garrisonville at ninety-one percent. Reason why Garrisonville's not growing, there's not a lot of development there. There is no Embry Mill in the Garrisonville elementary boundary. So that's the reason why it's sort of flat. Um, Park Ridge still at one oh three, uh, Winding Creek ninety-one. So, you know, on paper, all of these schools would be in good shape with a boundary change.
Yeah.
On paper.
So one oh, like, I'm new here, one oh three is considered good shape?
It's reasonable, because.
Like, to me, like.
Once I go over.
It just makes me wonder, like, is there, can we shave anything else out to get lower than a hundred and three as a, and I know you've probably thought about this, but.
Not without doing more domino.
Right.
And it also impacts the school that it's receiving the students.
Yeah.
Not without domino.
So remember, so for that, in that chart I had, the red, that starts at a hundred and five percent. The dark yellow is less than a hundred and five, between a hundred and a hundred and five. So that's reasonable.
It gets it down a bracket, but do we know how many more? Because I, I used to know this, but how many more houses we still have coming in Embry Mill?
Yes, that's already factored into the projections.
We're gonna show you a new school in Embry Mill.
Can I ask a favor? When you show us these heat maps and the concentration students.
I love heat maps, that's a great tool.
Would you put the location of the school as a dot or something?
It's a green flag.
Oh, is it? Okay, I can't see it from here. Okay, thank you.
You could just keep, keep using the clicker, because it's, when you, when you show the wide thing, I can't see like where a school is what.
Oh, okay.
So when you're talking about it, please, thank you, to have that eyesight.
I'm not gonna lie, the first map, I was like, that school's huge. And then I realized what I was looking at.
It's the county.
All right, so that, that's the Park Ridge. Now, now this scenario, just to sum it up, um, moves eight planning units and three hundred and forty students. And it does achieve reasonable, I mean, it does a great job at, of balancing enrollment using what we have. All right. Conway, I had a request for Conway.
Yep.
All right, so Conway is a little more complicated, so I gotta do a little more explaining.
It is, isn't it?
Okay, so I had to come back. I'm looking, this is now a map of projected elementary seats in twenty twenty-six. Conway has a really interesting boundary. Let me point this out. I call it bat wings.
Yep.
So this is one piece of Conway here, and then you see this right here? This is another piece.
Yep.
Scary, okay, just, just, from school plan, from back here, insane boundary.
I agree.
My hands are tied on it.
I, I tried to not have that happen.
All right, thank you. So Conway's a regular boundary shape, creates an island. So if we try to move this, this little piece right here, I call this the lower east portion. If you try to move that to Ferry Farm, it creates an island, because now this would turn green. So now you have a piece over here and another piece over here.
Like our Colonial Forge map.
Like Colonial Forge, which will likely get fixed eventually with a school. Um, and then of course, the western portion, lower portion of Conway, this area has like three hundred kids.
Yeah, and I would, I would note that those three hundred kids were at Rocky Run. They are low-income kids, lots of high-needs. They should not have been moved from Rocky Run, but they got moved to Conway, and they will not get moved out of Conway, if I have anything to do with it, because they cannot afford to be moved again this soon.
Yeah, and then, and then also looking at the data, you know, uh, twenty twenty-six.
And Rocky Run can't take them anyway, yep.
There you go.
Nobody else, it doesn't look like any, any of their names at all.
Right, so we don't have enough empty seats to help relieve Conway, right? Uh, because, you know, if you just look at the map, southern and northern, we got crowding going on. So we got a problem.
Yeah, build a school.
Well, so why, why can't we move Conway into Grafton and Ferry Farm though?
Right here for another school.
Yep, yep.
Clearly, yep, yep.
Oh, you mean right off seventeen?
I'm sorry, Mitch Graham, did you say something? Okay, all right, so are we okay? So that's my explaining on Conway.
Conway's a disaster, how do we fix it?
Yeah, I don't have an option, a boundary change option to fix it, unfortunately, but I wanted to explain.
We're thinking about learning cottages or portable classrooms, is that what you're gonna tell me?
What's that lower east portion? Is there a reason why that couldn't go to Ferry Farm?
They said it was only twenty-five students, so it doesn't, I mean, it helps, but it doesn't.
Well, it's, it's, it's one trailer.
Oh, I, I'm with you.
Only if it's like the right grade, you know what I mean? Like, it could, it could be absorbed by the school, therefore no learning cottage. It could be just absorbed.
So someone read my mind and said, oh, well then you gotta do relocation.
Gross.
Read our minds, the team's mind, no planning team.
We need to just really make a policy to call them learning cottages, because I can't, right?
What's the program capacity at Conway?
It's in nine fifty, right? Oh, but it's, yeah, 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 yeah.
Because when we moved all those kids from Old Forge into Conway, it pushed Conway into Title, Title I.
Right.
And so that would do the same.
These are the learning cottages near the field area.
So we're proposing to add six of them, deploy six of them. That would give us approximately a hundred and fifty seats, depending on what you put in there. And that would help alleviate crowding at Conway. All right, so. So we talked about boundary changes. That's one option. We talked about relocatables at Conway. This is just, what if we only use relocatables to fix a problem? That's what this chart kinda shows. So at Conway, it said, uh, because of the projected seat deficit, we're anticipating we need six reloans there to fix it. Hampton Oaks, it's in the yellow, nine seats, we're not gonna add reloans for that. Hartwood, and this is next year only, Hartwood.
They just need that, no water, no sewer.
No water, no sewer. If there was water and sewer, we could put two reloans, but we can't do it. Park Ridge, we could add eight reloans there.
But there is any place to put them, right?
There you go, you gotta space the pot.
It's expensive.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Teachers are gonna, teachers are gonna park in a library, I mean.
Thousand dollars a per classroom and a hundred and fifty thousand for the industry.
So that was my question. Is this like we buy these at a one-off, or is this like we're leasing them?
It's a short-term solution, so we would lease, but you could buy, and it's about a thousand dollars a month. It's a short-term solution, so we would lease, but you could buy, and it's about a thousand dollars a month per classroom and a hundred and fifty thousand for the. Infrastructure, just to hook them up.
Can we even get six for next year?
No.
For which school? Well, we're not recommending this, we're, I think we're, we're, for Conway, it's probably time to put relocatables, but the other ones.
Right, so I'm saying, can you get the six that you're recommending for Conway?
Yeah. We went out and did our own RFP in the fall and finalizing that now, so we had options. Um, knowing that we may have to present something to the board as discussed last year. And we haven't contracted with anybody officially yet, and we haven't asked them about a timeline, but potentially, yes.
We, yeah, we need to decide that by February would be what I would recommend, February or March the latest to get it.
Agreed.
Okay, and then we just, so that's sort of short term, and then the Stafford one, I believe this is in the, is still in the dark yellow, so we don't need, this is really zero. Here for Stafford, so that's a typo, I'm gonna apologize. Uh, so then if we look five years out into twenty twenty-six, just based on projections, this is showing seat deficits, and then how many relocatables would be needed? And you'll notice, really, the big takeaway for me, look at Stafford.
Stafford Elementary, yeah.
Yeah, and we, there's a lot of development.
Oh, not, yeah, yeah.
You're not projecting any increase in Park Ridge, I mean, I know we have to move them out, but over the next five years, four students in five years, that's, that's interesting.
Yeah, so the buildout, it's like, once it's done, it's done.
So the buildout in Embry Mill is done? Embry Mill? Is Embry Mill stopped?
Well, then how are we only growing four students in Embry Mill for the, in four years, if they don't, if it's not done?
Right now, the model is suggesting that, so each year, you have a fifth grade cohort leaving and a kindergarten cohort entering.
Oh, okay.
So depending on what your kindergarten cohort looks like.
Right, yeah, and, and, and neighborhoods go through like a maturity cycle, and they go through this cycle where, you know, a cohort of people come in at a certain age group, and then get older, and then you have almost empty nesters, and then it recycles again almost generational.
And, and that feels like some of the questions I had too, which is, I mean, we're really, really shooting darts in the dark, because a family of six could move out and a family of two could move in, and certainly you can't, you know, have that incorporated into that.
It's not quite as bad as that, I mean, we, we know what's gonna happen.
Well, yeah, I mean.
And that, when you get to the long term, you need to build a school, this is short term stuff, so relocatables and boundary changes, you choose. And we're recommending some re, some boundary changes and then some relocatables. You need to build some schools. Yeah, so these are short-term fixes, potentially, and also mid, midterm, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at in terms of growth, and how we could potentially fix it. Alright, so now, uh, here's some middle school availability maps, current, this school year, a lot of green, some greens, a lot of yellow. But we're in good shape, no red, right?
This year.
This year, this year. Drew has had fifteen seats available on our official count day, open. But interestingly enough, Dixon Smith, Stafford.
And you know.
Tons of, he got plenty of seats nearby, right?
Leave my schools alone.
Next year, Drew's projected to grow a little bit more. Projected for a deficit of fifty-three students.
Dixon Smith got more seats.
Dixon Smith's got some seats.
Got more.
Yeah, because there's nothing, there's not a lot going on there.
No, there is not.
And then if we look out five years.
Oh, my lord, and we got more.
Look at Dixon Smith, you know, it, it's something to do with, I'm just telling you.
Who put that school there?
Who put that thing there?
It's good, it's there, man.
But isn't that, like, Dixon Smith, we built and we were gonna close Drew, or vice versa? Is that how that works? And then we decided to keep it open?
No, it's actually the time.
But we do have programs, we could move out of Drew.
Right, and so, there is, and then also, just to be clear, five years out, we're looking at crowding at Drew and crowding.
Temple.
That's all those Embry Mill kids getting older.
Yeah.
There we go.
We're gonna speak about Drew as well, started running a little bit over, I think.
This is important stuff.
Yeah, uh, so here's our short-term strategy for middle schools. Short-term being next year, Drew proposes a change bound between Drew and Dixon Smith. We would reassign eight planning units with a hundred and ninety-seven students from Drew to Dixon Smith next year. Dixon Smith would be at ninety-one percent, Drew would be at seventy-eight percent capacity. Five years out, Dixon Smith at eighty-nine percent, Drew at ninety percent. Also, I mentioned here, there's no significant change in the demographic balance of the schools.
So is that all of Leland Station that's getting moved?
That's in this scenario, or option, all of Leland Station together.
Wow, okay.
But since you asked. We have another scenario, another option for, you know, for your consideration. Instead of moving all of, uh, Leland Station, uh, we only move, we're only slated to move the eastern portion, uh, to move to Dixon Smith. So this piece stays at Drew.
Right.
Uh, of Leland Station, so this, this area here.
Right.
So why would you keep, why would that be?
Leland Station is not like, it's, there's like the original portion of Leland Station, and then they've built two more portions.
Okay.
People in the original portion probably don't know people across Deacon and the other portion.
He's saying it's not a food community.
It's not cohesive. They have many roads dividing that.
I've driven past the city, so they don't have the community.
Are those subdivisions, or is that empty land there? Like, is, is that just showing like, uh, land capacity right there for?
Like this though?
Yeah, like that.
No, that's, that's true.
That's just the boundary, that, the way the boundary was drawn. It could be some planning unit. It could, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not like nice and neat.
So it's not, does, does it have any impact on the overall, okay, farm?
Yeah, and so this scenario, or option, remove five planning units, a hundred and twelve students. Next year, Dixon Smith at eighty-three percent, Drew at ninety-one percent. Five years from now, Dixon Smith at eighty-two percent, Drew at a hundred and three percent.
So, but, but you showed me the previous one, I just wanna see what the numbers, how the numbers change.
And I also, it's a different conversation with middle schools when you're talking about changes.
So in five years, Drew ninety percent. Because if you didn't disrupt people's lives, do it one time, not twice.
And Sarah, we, we were talking about this too, but in, is it doing middle school changes, the other piece of it that you kinda have to look at, we talked about? Cause Sarah and I sat down with Lionel, almost a year ago, I guess, and, um, looked at, or maybe last fall, I don't know when. But anyways, we sat down with Lionel and looked at it, thank you. Um, is that the free and reduced was something that we were concerned with, um, impact on Drew, uh, less so for Dixon. But then also, um, you know, for me, I know that, uh, well, programs, I'm worried about in the middle, we just adopted the middle school program, so I worried about the effect on students at Drew and their ability to get everything that everyone is being offered, and also, um, athletics. It's going to affect their ability, potentially, to compete, and so that's just something I wanted to think, just, it's just different in the middle school and high schools similarly, um, for those things that.
But I don't think it, I think in terms of, um, feeder patterns, I don't think it really makes much difference, cause the kids.
They're all gonna go to Stafford.
There are kids who, they'll, they'll, there's, there are kids in the elementary schools of all those places that go to Dixon and that go to Drew. So I don't think there's a problem there, and then they all end up at Stafford, so I don't think there's a feeder pattern, but, yeah, as much as I would like the other one to be the better one, that really does, in terms of the five-year, look like the better solution.
Yeah, got it.
Yep.
Okay, uh, alright, let's, uh, and then staff does not recommend this option.
Yeah, no, I don't recommend that option.
But it is an option, right, but we, we just wanna show it, so we're not biased.
Park the car over there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, where do we even put that?
They're both their athletic programs, cause we all on the field.
Maybe, maybe a high rise of, uh, poor, uh, cottage, learning cottages.
Yeah, basically put that in a big font, recommend that.
So.
Alright, so now we can title them.
Sorry to interrupt, before we switch over to CIP, it's an important thing that we wanted to land with the board, especially since we do have new members, is that there's a direct relationship between redistricting and relocatable classrooms, okay? And though you, we're presenting all the options for the board to consider, it's not that we're necessarily recommending a bunch of trailers go to Park Ridge, or a bunch of trailers go here, a bunch of trailers go there, as a matter of fact, we may not be. But we are presenting you what the options would be, so that you can decide and make interchangeable decisions about what that looks like, so.
So, and it always worked towards the least disruption, so changing students at one time would be better than having to go back in five years and say, oops, we gotta do, you know, redo.
Well, in five years, though, the plans that he's talking isn't the same students, the five-year plan is actually different cohort of students.
But it's the same, it's the same family. Yeah, when we do the budget presentation at Drew, will we be far enough along with some, to, to let some of those folks know, so that people have it on their radar? I mean, I just, I, I'm.
Well, that's kind of, my question is time, like, you say for, like, for next school year. So, and again, like, we have redistricting, and we have, like, I, like, the term they use, boundary changes, which is not a complete redistricting. But I know we're supposed to be having a complete redistricting because of the tenure stuff, and that's gonna be on top of whatever we decide today. Hope, or not today, but like, with this type of present, based on this data, hopefully not impacting these same people, is really the end goal?
So I, I.
Is that the process now for like, moving forward?
I don't think there's any different things in redistricting and a boundary change, I think it's all the same right now.
It is all the same, yeah.
That's better, but.
In the board, this is really just an introductory conversation to this topic.
Right.
The board has a lot to think about, uh, before it brings this back up in front of you all, probably at the end of February or early March, for consideration, and then to seek some public input, and then to make some potential decisions about what next year would look like.
Right.
This is very much a, get it done before the end of March, so that people know what to expect.
See, and I was, and I was, and timeline wise, I was, and thus, I know I put pressure on you, but time-wise, want, I wanted this down even sooner than that, because of how late we have been for putting out a bell schedule, putting out redistricting, and it just gets so tumultuous with meetings and all of that. And I, I just feel like it's for, for the best interest of the community at the school, and meaning teachers and administration, as well as for the families that are gonna be impacted. Um, this is why I, you know, in talking with Trish Tu and other members, I wanted to see these conversations in January, February, with the decision by the end of February.
Thank you.
Um, including public input, just because I really feel like more, uh, more time is better than less time, but that's just me.
But we, uh, it looks to me like we definitely have to do something.
Oh, that's what I wanted, yeah, and sooner or not later, yeah, yeah.
But it, it, I just wanna make sure you weren't saying, so let's wait till next year, so we can give.
No, no, no. Susan did not say that, that's why Susan in November said, can you bring me the EAP in December? So we can have conversations in January, making decisions in February, that's what that was.
Yep.
Yeah, and to Mrs., and to Mrs. Randall's point.
And I said it to him too.
Absolutely, this is a conversation that, you know, unfortunately, the board got a little bit caught behind the superintendent change, and, you know, of, of new board members being seated in that whole budget nonsense that everybody keeps talking about.
What?
Um, so, you know, it's, it has kinda protracted things a little bit, so you're, you're going from effectively budget to, uh, this consideration of managing space, to then, you know, funding exciting stuff like strategic planning down the road. But, but it is like immediately after budget, transitioning to this conversation.
Well, and honestly, I like this as being part of a budget conversation, because especially as we go to talking with our counterparts across the street, I really feel like it kind of, it speaks to our CIP, it speaks to our funding issues, our classroom issues, more money out, being allocated to the schools because we have crowding issues and what have you, so that's why I, I wanted it to be a tangled mess.
Can I say, this is just a question about the Park Ridge, um, redistricting. So the Embry Mill families, were they just moved into Park Ridge out of Winding Creek, and now they're being moved back? Is that the proposal, or were they originally?
No, none of Embry Mill was in Park Ridge.
Okay, so, so.
All of Embry Mill, all except for section one has been in Park Ridge.
Right, but they were at Winding Creek.
She's talking about the last region.
And the last redistricting, just a couple of years ago, we moved them, and we try not to move people.
Yes.
From, like, in multiple redistrictings.
No, I understand what you're saying.
So that was my question, was, were we, were we doing that in this proposed boundary change?
Or in, 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 not just even Embry Mill, in any of those groups that you were talking about moving? Were they moved in the last redistricting and will be moved back, in any of those scenarios?
Well, Embry Mill's gonna be moved again if we build a school in Embry Mill. I assume we're gonna wanna put Embry Mill in, Embry Mill School, I don't, don't know, maybe not.
Depending where we end up building.
Just like Hampton Oaks is all ended up in Hampton Oaks, Park Ridge is all in Park Ridge.
And I agree, and so, what you just said, it also depends on the timing, so when does that Embry Mill school happen? If you look at the county's last CIP.
Is it number eighteen, or is it number nineteen?
Uh, it could be eight, it could be the next school, but I think according to last year's county budget, they said, what, twenty, twenty-nine, when we did it? So.
And we need two, we don't need one elementary school, we need two elementary schools.
So that's a perfect segue into, uh, the CIP.
Okay, so what is the CIP? It's the Capital Improvement Plan, which is an annual budget and planning document that identifies the location, timing, of requested funding of new large capital projects, three R projects for the next ten years. What's a large capital project? New schools, additions to existing schools, major renovations, major replacements. The three R list, three R stands for repair, replacement, and rehabilitation. And that three R list just identifies fundings for those types of projects on existing, in existing school facilities. The goal of the CIP is to ensure that our kids and teachers have optimal learning environments.
That's a stretch.
Now I'm gonna pass it on to Mr. Anderson, John, do you wanna use the laptop?
If you could just change the slides for me?
Sure.
So, um, I'll, I'll speak about some of the challenges, and, um, as Lionel was presenting short-term op, term options. Uh, those are really important, I know they take a lot of time, they're inconvenient, they cause a lot of concern. The long-term options need to happen, so that you don't get into a lot of problems, cause you're, the problems are just gonna get worse. If we, if we don't build any schools, um, you're gonna have, I mean, eventually, it doesn't even work, if everything's red, you, you just, you run out of options, and it's, um, it's a nightmare, um, and then, and I'm, I'm gonna leave it on a positive note, so don't worry about that, but I just wanna let you know how serious the situation is. It's, you can't wait, I mean, we're out of time, literally, with this meeting. I'm out of time with, like, buildings and schools, and we really need to get going on, on some of these things, and then infrastructure is the other side of it. So if you think about timing of funding and projects needed sooner, absolutely, and you, we can't say that more, um, um, clearly, is that we just, we need to get this done. Insufficient funding for large capital projects and three R projects, uh, again, three R projects are those renovation, infrastructure-type replacement projects that keep your buildings working properly. Um, different funding approach needed, and there's some ideas and some stu, discussion about that, as well as land and financing, um, big challenges. So these are sort of main challenges that we're facing with the long-term plan. Thanks, so there's a, um, you've already talked about the pay-as-you-go for the, um, major maintenance, the three R. If that's in the operating budget, one, we can plan better, because we just know what we're gonna get, we're not going through this whole debt financing process, which is cumbersome. And, um, if you build that up, it's gonna save you money in the long run, because you're not having to pay the bank a lot of the money to replace the chiller. So it's a, it's a great, it's a great idea, um, from my perspective, as you're looking at the infrastructure issues and all the unfunded projects, you're really looking at how dependable are your schools gonna be, and, um, if you've ever driven an old car, I mean, eventually, you're like wondering, is that car gonna get me there or not? And, um, we have these issues with our schools now, so, um, you'll have an agenda item for Brookpoint chiller, or Brookpoint boilers. We have two boilers, you need two for a big high school. We were taking parts from one boiler to make it, the other boiler work, cause both of them broke. So that was this winter, we were looking to close in Brookpoint High School, because it wouldn't have heat, and we're gonna make it through the winter, hopefully, but, you know, we've got some new boilers on the way. Those are gonna be, um, if you approve them at your board meeting, they'll be going in by November, um, cause all of our stuff takes time, they have to go and order the boilers, you have to tear out the old boilers, put in the new boilers, so everything that we're doing is taking time. We could have brought in temporary boilers, and started to talk so much about this, but then you're spending even more money, you're renting boilers, and you're gonna have to buy new ones anyway. So a lot of times, when you don't have enough money, or you don't invest properly in the infrastructure, you're spending even more. So you're trying to save money by spending less upfront, but you're really gonna spend way more. Yeah, exactly, it's pay me now or pay me later.
Right.
So, and, and you pay me later, it's gonna be more if you haven't done what you're supposed to do. So this is a great idea for the, um, three R, and, um, really hope that this'll work. Next, so this is just the current CIP, and, um, so I, I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, but you can see high school, six, a hundred and fifty million. That's without the, uh, offsite costs, we know there's a roadway and a bridge that needs to be in there, so, um, total cost is about a hundred and sixty-four million. And we were stuck at a hundred and twenty-five million is what the county would approve. Um, now we could build that in phases. So again, you could spend less upfront and then build a wing of that later. You're going to spend more money. So then that, that's going to be an even more costly project. And you need those seats. You're, you're out of seats with the high school. Elementary school eighteen, we recommend open August twenty twenty-six. And then it's approved for twenty thirty. So how is that going to work? And, I mean, I don't think it's going to work. So, you know, we have, we have a big problem there.
A hundred more.
We talked about Drew Middle School. Um, we're going to talk a little bit more about Drew Middle School later.
Cost is the cost of the new school.
In the presentation, E C S E capacity, building more there. Uh, eventually getting a new middle school opening in August twenty twenty-nine. And then, um, Dorstappford High School, Fine Arts Wing, another elementary school, another high school. And this is like a very conservative plan. I would say even overly conservative because we've been pushed back so much for that. And we've been focusing on our high school a lot. Like how can we build the whole, the whole high school all at once? Cause we need to build that now. But, you know, maybe this is not, um, got the attention it deserves. So we're going to talk about possible update. Yes.
So they have us building an elementary school and were approved to build an elementary and middle at the same time? Both for August thirty, I mean.
One thirty, one thirty one.
This is, uh, I should have been more clear. This is the county approved timeline. This is what we requested last year. And we didn't, I've been here, I've been here a little more than two years. So this has not really changed a lot in the two years. And now we, we really see, we need to start to think differently about our plan.
Can we just go back for just one second?
Sure.
But one of the things that in just your presentation that you gave us, um, and ju-, and how you projected out, and I could be wrong. But the way you were projecting out, it just seemed like elementary school nineteen might be a higher priority than middle school nine, but I don't know.
You're, you're absolutely right.
It looked that way to me too.
And so this is your current CIP that was adopted.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, based on the projections, EAP, things like that, this would not necessarily be currently your preferred, uh, or recommended CIP.
No, it's not.
But I think part of the reason we put the middle school up there is because we were wondering what to do with Drew. If it was a rebuild or if it was a, so I think that was why we put the middle school up.
Yeah, I think this is an overly conservative plan. We've been really focusing too much on the first time costs. So the, um, possible plan.
Yeah.
So possible CIP update, which is something we don't need to decide today, but we want to make some changes to the, we're, we're suggesting there could be some changes to the, um, the, the long-term projects that we're planning. If it's, um, in a black font, those are just from the last request, so no change. The blue ones, they've, um, they've changed. They've either shifted up or we're changing the amount. So, um, we finished the comprehensive studies for both Drew and for Hartwood. And spent a lot of time on that. And, um, it wasn't really a surprise to me. They're recommending a rebuild. They're saying you should rebuild both of those schools. And, uh, they're, um, really, when you walk the schools and you see the infrastructure, their past, their useful life. And then you get into that situation. Do you want to put a lot of money into it forever as it gets older and older and older? Or do you just want to build a new school and then you're not going to have to spend as much money on the maintenance?
So Drew isn't on there.
Alright, so hang, hang tight.
I'm sorry, Drew's not on there.
Yeah, so it says one and two.
Yeah, there's sixteen of these projects. So the blue, uh, Hartwood Elementary Replacement, somewhere in the Hartwood District, um, there's an opportunity to possibly solve some of our gross, growth challenges with the University of Mary Washington, um, property. That's the Stafford Campus that, um, the Board of Supervisors has actually been recommending that we look at. You know, how could we use that? Which is a great idea. There's a lot of things that could go there. Um, I won't get into much detail on that today. This is another project that hasn't, we haven't changed. It's the same project that was in last year's request. Um, rebuild Gary Melcher's complex. I don't think it would take another big analysis to say that, that complex is, is also beyond its useful life. So what would we rebuild it to be? Um, you know, that's, that's going to be something that needs to go.
It's property to do, and it's a good sized property.
It's thirty-eight, about thirty-eight.
And, and just because you, you have that on the list, doesn't necessarily mean that you have to rebuild it there.
Yeah.
Um, and you also could capture an efficiency. Instead of having the project of the additional early childhood special education classrooms, you actually could have an efficiency and have the two projects together. What you have there is that in some of the recommendations that we're looking at making to the board for consideration, is you actually have four elementary school building projects. Elementary School eighteen, Hartwood Elementary School Replacement, the Melchers Complex, or Rising Star. We could just probably call it rebuild Rising Star. And then Elementary School nineteen, there's tremendous efficiency in building, um, off of a, a, a set of site plans that is similar and saving money. And you're able to accelerate your construction costs significantly when you are using a similar site plan or a prototype site plan. And there is some rationale to putting these projects together in a bundle, um, as your next group to consider and to think about. So carry on, John, sorry.
Yes, um, and, and not, there are some options that we would want to look with you for the Gary Melchers Complex and how we would reuse that, because there is a good bit of space there. Um, Elementary School nineteen, which obviously also needs to be on our radar. Uh, because you're only getting three hundred and ninety-three additional seats with the Hartwood Replacement. We're building a, a normal size elementary school, but Hartwood is already, um, undersized. So you're basically replacing that school. So you're not really gaining the seats. That was more for, um, correcting that infrastructure. Okay? And then here we go. We know we need an additional fleet services facility. Y'all have heard the sad stories of not having enough space to work on the school buses and even open the hoods all the way. It's really not right.
It's not safe.
We put turf fields on there because they really belong as a capital project rather than a, um, rehabilitation or renovation type project. That's a new thing. So, um, this is just taking it from the three R list and putting it on this list and seeing, is there a way we could maybe get that done sooner? Um, so, um, same with North Stafford High School Fine Arts Wing. I think we would want to have a, another look at that because we've had so many discussions with the folks at the school. And, um, so we've decided we could, you know, maybe look at that and, and make that maybe a little more affordable and do it sooner. So we're, um, we're interested in studying that more this year. Drew Middle School rebuild, um, that's a big change from the previous plan. Now we've done the analysis with the consultants and they basically said, don't, don't throw good money after bad. Look at our plan to rebuild that school.
And similarly, you've got two middle school projects grouped together where there's some efficiencies and some cost savings and potentially doing two projects that are similar together. And you may even look at the top ten projects in rank order as being a group that could be financed together. And then some of the subsequent projects, ten and eleven, excuse me, uh, not ten and eleven, eleven and twelve as a group that could be financed together. And looking at how you might finance these as packages, not just as isolated and one-off projects. But how would we finance them together and how would we move these groups together?
Yeah, I guess my only, my, my concern is just we've got kids at, at Drew and Hartwood and, and, and now that, you know, either one of them, we're saying, okay, so you can just sit there in that school for another ten years.
And, and that's truly what we just saw happen with Ferry Farm was that, you know, we were supposed to be done.
And during the ten years, we don't put any money into your school because we're telling you we're going to rebuild, but we won't.
That way, Dr. Taylor, so, no, you, you can't. So we have money coming for, um, for Drew. And, um, it's, it, it been coming this year. So we have a project that we're developing. But it gets into that situation of you're in an awkward position, re-, approving a school and when you really need to take it down. So the timing of that is, is awkward, but that's what we're in the situation with Drew and with Hartwood and with Gary Melchers for that matter. How can we just make them last where we're not going to be, um, having a school site with constant disruptions or problems? Um, when my phone rings at six o'clock in the morning, I mean, it's, it's very stressful when we're looking at possibly shutting a school down, not having a school day because the building's not working. Um, this is, this is not something.
Right, and, and so why are turf fields up there?
Well, so this is, it's a different, it's, it's.
I mean, I, I keep, people keep coming and talking to me about equity. And I'm sitting there going, we have schools where they shut the school down. Students do not get a school day, but we're putting turf fields above schools.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a, an issue of scale. Um, this becomes almost like a drop in the bucket and, and you can go ahead and get that parity issue solved, um, this way. Um, if you wait, if you wait to fix everything before you do the smaller projects, you're never going to get to the smaller projects.
Could we not deal with turf fields with some carryover or something at some point?
That's a possibility, sure.
I don't think turf fields really goes, I know officially it goes here, but given the, the scope of these projects and the dollar figures associated with it, nothing else is even close to three million, right?
Yeah, we could put it on the year.
I mean, I'm just.
Well, here's my question though, but, I mean, what is the most, like if we're, if we're going to limp along Hartwood and Drew, if we have to limp them along, I, I, I would hate to see like what happened at Ferry Farm, and I know you weren't here then, but I would hate to see that happen because it was a disaster. But my thing is, is that, when, if you're talking carryover, is there a potential to look at what, like right now at Hartwood? The major hurt for them is the roof, as I understand. I mean, well, the water and sewer, of course.
Yeah.
So is there something that we can do for that? And what is the major, you know, pain for Drew that we could help them with to help limp that, limp them along?
And we're working on that. So that's, that's, that's not y'all's problem to solve.
Money, I would be very concerned at least showing good faith to both of those schools.
Not even good faith. To me, it's just like mechanics. If you're, if you're driving an old car, you got to replace the tires.
They did some of their roofs and they renovated classrooms.
And that's what we're doing. We know.
So, so just to, if we rebuild Drew Middle School and add four hundred and fifty seats, given our, the way our, our attendance is in the middle school, do we even need middle school nine?
Today, no. Tomorrow, yes.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, but where it falls in our needs, our, our anticipated growth needs.
We would need those seats for that, from a new Drew and a new middle school.
You're going to start, you're going to start to, to creep into that middle school zone and.
I'd be curious to see what your numbers show for that. Projection wise, like projection wise, if we do, if we have a new Drew, how much, if we're get, gaining four hundred and fifty seats, could we need still a nine?
Well, and it could push that project further down.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I worry about then. Especially because we have so many other critical needs because we're behind.
When you're saying push that project down, then you're saying bundle in Drew was something else then as opposed to a nine?
Yeah, potentially, yeah. You, the idea is, you have to think about this from a couple of different lenses. You know, one, what makes sense in terms of what your needs are? And then two, what makes fiscal sense in terms of how you can finance it?
There's an awful lot of to be determined in those.
There are. And it's, it's a pretty big change for the whole, the whole plan. And, um, it's good from my perspective. You should be making me a lot more busy now. Otherwise, but otherwise, if you don't, you're going to really regret it. And I hate to say it like that, but you're going to regret it in five years. I would probably not even be working here in that amount of time. So, you know, it's your problem, but you need to take care of these things now. The infrastructure, the growth. Um, these are things you've got to just, you know, put a, put a plan together, figure out how to solve the problem. And then, no, and then we got to figure out how to make it happen. And it's got to be a reasonable plan. I'm very interested in cost effectiveness and best value. Um, some of the things that Dr. Taylor was mentioning about building two elementary schools combined, you're saving millions when you do it that way. If you do enough smart things like that, you can, you know, somehow get it all done. And, um, that's what I think this school board needs to focus on. Is that, you know, rather than kicking the can down the road, we got to figure, how can we come up with a plan that we know will work? And then somehow convince them across the street to fund the plan.
You know, the reality of seeing Hartwood actually shut down.
Yeah.
Is.
Terrible.
Complete, and, but completely eye-opening. So it has now happened. And what did it cost us that day to relocate all those students? Both, you know, emotional cost, educational cost, financial cost. How many times can that happen in the next school year? How many times are we going to be willing to do that before we're just going to be like, we cannot reopen again? And now we have to put all these kids everywhere? Is that something we want, like, that, from their standpoint, like, they need to see that, that that's basically what we are doing. And it has happened. It's not, it might happen. We have had to shut down a school because it physically could not handle the students that are there.
Yeah.
And this is our backup plan because at some point, we're going to have to say, it cannot open tomorrow, now what? And if we don't even have ground broken, land purchased, like you're leaving us unable to function.
Yeah, and it, and it, and it can't be that way. So the leaky roof has to be fixed. The water system has to be improved. I mean, we're going to be investing this money into Hartwood. We will be investing money into Drew. We just have to do it. And the concept here is it's going to be more and more and more.
Well, do you call it an investment?
Build the new school. So you need to build the new school. You need to have the plan for the new school. And then that gives us a strategy for how we're to maintain those schools so that they are dependable and they are functional. You just don't, you want to sort of stop the bleeding as far as playing. Yeah.
The, the term investment.
It's a Band-Aid.
It's not an investment. It's a, yeah.
And that's the thing, they want.
It's an expensive Band-Aid.
Across the street, do they want our headlines to be school shutdown because we had no running water?
They don't.
What is this like?
They really don't.
Circle country stuff.
And nobody wants that, so.
How much instructional, I think it might be interesting to add to your presentation to this, to, to the Board of Supervisors, how much instructional, instructional time do we lose because of facility failures like Brookpoint and Hartwood?
It sounds like Brookpoint, we were only saying because it was great.
It's really, the, the team you've got. Yeah, the team you've got, and they're not a big team. They are able to play their miracles sometimes. So I think we're seeing relatively few disruptions, but you're, really, you've got a lot of risk. And that's what, that's what you want to think about is the level of risk that you're accepting with older facilities and with even the growth issue. I mean, what if it grows more than what Lionel projects? We've got, we've, we've talked about.
I was going to go through this too, because I'm one of the folks that I have to leave at twelve thirty. But, but I think even because we're talking about, especially for the Hartwood folks, the elementary school, the, the level of parents like, it's like, I'm sending my kids to school where there's potential mold problems and all that other stuff. So the words are there. They're floating above the community and they're ready to see action.
Yeah.
And they should be. They absolutely should be. But, but yeah, I think it's for Hartwood Elementary.
Yeah, we're going to keep it in good shape. And, and we've, we've done mold testing. There's not mold. We've got, we've had, well, there's, I mean, there's mold in, in the air. It's not, it's not the level where it's harmful. And we've, we've done the cleanup. So we're just going to keep doing that. We're not going to make it up.
But they stopped hearing you talking after you say there's mold, right? Like you and I both know there's levels and there's black mold and there's, you know, all kinds of different mold that's out there.
It's in the air outside. It's in there anywhere.
Right, but, but they stopped listening up that, because they don't know beyond that where that.
And I think that's what, when you have an older school like that, and it raises those fears. But we have a really good process for that. So we'll be glad to tell you all about what we've done.
Definitely.
No problem. And we've talked about that.
If you guys could just up through, I mean, if I could actually touch up to what, yeah, just saying.
Embry Mill sites, so these are sites that we can have. They're proffered sites. We need to go through the process with the county. We've hired an engineer to do a study for an elementary school. Um, on one of the, um, Embry Mill sites, this is Mine Road, and then you see Embry Mill Road there. Um, it's not a perfect site, but it's, it's, it's going to work well for an elementary school. So this is land that we need and, um, that would be probably the very next elementary school we build, given the, um, given the growth issues in that area. Um, middle school nine, um, also fits in this, um, Embry Mill subdivision. This is Mine Road again and then Coastal Avenue. So this is kind of up the hill, um, in the neighborhood more. Um, again, not a great site. There's some electrical that goes through there that would have to be dealt with. Um, but, you know, it's, it's going to work. And, and the engineer's done a layout. This is just conceptual. We would need to get a, our overtime board to really design the project. Okay, Drew Middle School, um, there's a possibility of rebuilding Drew on the small site that it has now. These are basically the fields. So we would build the school here. And then we could demolish the existing building and the field would go where the school is. So where the field area is. So we can make that work. Um, it's challenging. Um, if there's another option that we can maybe, um, come up with that has more space for Drew Middle School, then we'll look at that. And, um, these are things we're going to be looking at over the next several weeks and, and be back to you with, um, more recommendations.
So this is the kind of strategy that people sixty years from now thank us about. And don't know who they're thanking, but they thank us about. Is where we position, uh, schools on the properties that we have so that future rebuilds can be built on property.
Right.
In a mirror site. So this is, uh, this is hard to do the way that this was laid out, but not impossible. And it's important to note that it's not impossible. Um, but in future school construction projects, we, we will be thinking about this, not just how this school would be laid out or school X will be laid out, but how the future school replacement to school X will be laid out sixty to seventy years later.
Alrighty, and then, um, we feel like we'll need some direction soon for the boundary change plans for next year. Relocatable classrooms. As we said, we're, we're, um, anticipating Conway having some relocatables. And then, um, depending on how this goes, you know, maybe that's all this year. Um, then the request for the Embry Mill proper, proper sites, we just want to make sure y'all understand that we're going to make that request of the county and start to go through that process. Um, and then discussing CIP project strategies, cost efficiencies and planning.
Yeah.
It's attached to the agenda.
It's in more docs, but we'll get you a copy.
Oh, in our board, oh, hand newspaper, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm new here, so maybe I missed the connect, but request. I knew here's, maybe I missed the connect, but requesting Emory Mill proffered site instead of potentially put a new school on, you're talking elementary?
Yes.
Yeah, those are the pictures he showed, the elementary and the middle.
And, and middle, there was also a middle school, sorry.
Um, I, so. I get that we have a lot of red. But coming in, and I've said this to Dr. Taylor, like, I don't, I feel like most of our schools are full because we're pulling from areas that don't have schools. Anthony Burns is ninety percent from come, coming across Route one.
Right, right.
Hampton Oaks, we're coming from across Route one, but you guys would have had to come over anyway because Monqueer or Hampton Oaks would have gone all the way across Route one. Winding Creek, I don't know the percentage offhand, but they're pulling from across the Hartwood area and Park Ridge is our only, like.
Across Route one in Winding Creek too, I think.
Um, do we?
I think so.
I thought that those all came to Burns now. Cause Burns, it's literally, I only knew this when I was getting the stuff to Durknock. Like, only my little neighborhood is actually Garrisonville that goes to Austin Ridge. All of those other parents, they don't live in like my voting district. And I was like, I can't believe how many elementary kids we are busing across Route one. So while like, am I gonna say no to a shiny school in my tiny little district? No. But it, um, like, I'm trying to understand why it doesn't make sense from a transportation, from a building, from a population standpoint to build outside of Garrisonville and pull some of those kids back.
Right. There's, um, there was, when we did the last redistricting, the recommendation was for quite a few kids to go down to Grafton. Um, who lived out on Courthouse Road, towards the Marlboro Point and stuff like that. And nobody wants to come south if they commute north. Nobody wants their kids to go to elementary school in the southern end of the county if they live on Courthouse Road. Because they don't wanna have to go south in order to, they, they, they wanna be able to drop their kids on the way to work, you know, all that kinda thing. So that's how you ended up with so many kids at Stafford.
Are we looking at a high school somewhere in between, like?
Or not a high school, but an elementary school, an elementary school, is there a site potential on the?
It would be beyond.
Like, ah, you wanna give me a school, but I don't know.
Every Mill site because the, the sites are so hard to come by and this one's there right in an area of road. Um, this one makes sense to go ahead and build now and then see where would we locate elementary school number nineteen? And we also need to think about the replacement for Hartwood. So we really have three elementary schools we need to plan for soon.
Yep. I mean, your point is not, you're not incorrect, that that's.
But the land issues are, are huge and deciding those locations and, you know, choosing, because you're, you're running out of time. You need to build these schools.
They're taking it back?
And you have to have the land to do it, obviously.
Madam Chair, because of time, it might, might behoove us, and I'm gonna make this suggestion to you.
We have until two, so.
Okay, well, neither so, um, you know, if it's, if it's, if you think it's appropriate for individual board members to set up one-on-ones with Lionel and John, if that might help to get some questions answered or whatever you think.
My only question would be if we did that, then they may be answering the same questions with each of these meetings. And if they have a chance to just answer them all at once, then we can all gain from a benefit of maybe a question I may have, not a thought, that's the only.
Yeah, we really, we really want to.
She likes it better when we submit questions to like.
And then we all give answers. This is kind of a complicated little puzzle. And the decisions that we're looking at, like for Drew, you know, is that the approach we wanna take or do we wanna consider perhaps, uh, Melchers could be the site for the middle school.
That would be nice.
Rebuild. There's thirty acres there. It creates a different dominoes, but it's a bigger site for a middle school. So, I mean, those are the kinds of things that would be great to have some feedback from, even the discussion about Emory Mill. Um, for me, I just felt lucky we have a site in Emory Mill and we need to build a elementary school soon. So, but discussing maybe where would the other elementary school go, elementary school number nineteen or the replacement for Hartwood, those are issues. So, um, I think there's a whole lot to talk about. We're, of course, flexible and would love to just get your feedback however it's convenient to do. But it's really important that we get that feedback and start to get this plan ironed out. It's gonna be submitted across the street. When did we do it last year? We, we actually had it done in August, so then y'all approved it in September.
Yes.
So we're on that timeframe, but we really, some of these, we need to make the decision sooner so we can even develop the plan.
Yeah, but even to move some of those dominoes, you've gotta give a starting point. So we need a piece of land to start with, to either replace Melchers or to build a new Hartwood.
Yeah, like.
You know, there needs to be a starting point.
For me, like, you wanna put another middle school, I, I see the need for that. But a fifth elementary school in that tiny little postage stamp, where we're just gonna bring more kids into that tiny little postage stamp. Doesn't seem to me like the best use of our county resources. Um, even early childhood there, I could make an argument for almost anything else.
And that was something that somebody suggested also, is maybe early childhood could go and the day school could go on the Drew site. And then Drew would be built on the Melcher site and it is in the district. And we haven't really vetted it completely, but it's just an idea.
But we still need a place to start. So we need, we need a place to start so that we can move Melchers out, raise it and build a new Drew.
If that's the process, that's great, but.
So, so I, I think that it's hard to connect the, where they would start and what the pieces.
I think I need a moment to digest and put my questions down and have another conversation with you guys. That's how I feel.
Yeah, and I think the one-on-one ideas are good too, because some of these ideas might be easy just to kinda work out together and then bring them back to the rest of the group to discuss. So however it's convenient for you.
Thank you.
So maybe a work session later, like a month from now after you've got a chance to get all the questions. I just wanna make sure that any, any questions people raise or answers that, that we all, you know, have an opportunity to, you know, to share.
And are we going to, in your budget town hall, so these some of the things we're gonna potentially brush against?
Is mainly about the operating budget.
Okay.
Uh, because the CIP process, the, the board adopted a CIP in the fall and we're still on schedule to do that again. But we definitely want, we don't want the board to, to consider these complex issues with potential boundary changes.
Yes.
And with trailers without thinking about this bigger picture and what this might look like.
Yeah.
In terms of school building. So that's why we're introducing this for the board now.
But the boundary change and trailer thing, we're not waiting a month to come back to talk about that.
Right, I just, right, I just, just.
But we want you to get your head wrapped around some of the bigger issues. So, to, to that point, Madam Chair, you, you have a work session um, scheduled for some issues on the eighth, but, but not one on the twenty-second. If you would like to have a work session, session on this topic on the twenty-second.
Submitted, and that's, that's exactly. And then if anyone wants to have the one-on-one, then the two of you can put together what you, what comes out of that and to share with.
Sure.
And you could do two on two. So like if a new board member wants to sit with another board member, we can accommodate and, and help with that too.
And we're gonna continue to work on this. If you go back to the possible list again, um, so University of Mary Washington, there's a lot for us to do just to decide what we might want to use that for and what, what would fit.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Fit well. So we need to have this conversation with, um.
Is there land available with the Mary Washington site in addition to the facilities that are already there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, rebuild Gary Melchers, you know, what, what would that land be most suited for? Lionel's heavily involved in those questions. And we can come back with more information and probably more recommendations rather than ideas. We just didn't want to get too far along with any of these. Um, if, you know, if any of these are like a really bad idea, even just the, the comment that the, the next slide turf field should be on the year-end list, that helps us, just helps us plan.
I feel year-end list, that's, we've got money for that.
It helps us plan, so we're not.
As long as, to me, I feel like if there's not something for Hartwood or, or Drew, then also I feel like that's a little bit of a pouring salt into a wound kinda thing.
But, um, I'd be glad to do a summary. I can do a summary.
Yeah, you're right. Given they have a plan of what you're gonna do, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we'll just make sure that I, I'll make sure each house you set up a time to come down. I just wanna get to know the building. It's history.
Yeah, and, and I'd be glad to do that. And, um, I will say it's a wonderful school. I love to go there. It's, um, it's definitely got some issues. There's nothing that we're panicking about, but I real, we realize there's folks in the community that have been just really, you know, really concerned. And some of them, they're overly concerned, I would say, because.
Oh, yeah, the landscaping, they're all taking a lot.
Yeah, it's not, it's not as bad as.
And that's okay because their kids are there all day.
Yeah.
But that's why I just, from a historical perspective, I'd like to see what's built this kind of, um, panic in them, right? Like, what are, what are the actual issues versus the procedures that I'm seeing and what are the, what are the, what are the ones we, we have received ourselves?
Yeah, and I think something like when the water supply malfunctioned and then the tank comes back on it, pushes the air through the system. So, you know, that's kinda scary.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, it's how that old building works.
Trish, the turf fields, I mean, you have, folks have repeatedly said that the other turf fields were provided with other.
Proffers, they're proffers.
So is it not possible for the board of supervisors to use proffer money to take care of these?
Proffers can only go to the schools where the students from the development where the proffers are coming from go.
But what about board supervisors?
That Forge and North did not have subdivisions feeding into them, that there was proffer money available.
Right.
Because those are, those are both built a long time ago. That's the, and, and actually the legal station proffers, I think, paid for the one at Stafford High.
So should we just move a few students into North?
We could ask the county, I'll talk to the staff.
Our, our, our Emory Mill is there now, but I don't know, you know, I don't know what actually the proffers are.
Does, um, anybody have any feedback on the older buildings? Cause a big concept here is these, these older buildings need to be rebuilt. Um, does anybody have any strong feelings the other way about that? I mean, you, you can't say one-time cost by kicking the can down the road, but the rebuilds are.
And this goes to Drew, is if we're gonna rebuild Drew, are we gonna rebuild it with the Heather M Fields day school in the basement? Or are we gonna make it a full-fledged middle school and perhaps move that program somewhere? That would be the only question.
Yeah, well, and I kinda find interesting, I mean, I hate to, you know, I, I'm very attached to Drew, but, and I hate, you know, hate that thought. But the idea of using a Gary Melchers site for a new, for, for Drew and then use the Drew site for Heather M Field and early childhood, the advantage of Drew is it's right on Route one. It's very easy access to the interstate. So if you're having to pull children to a location for special services, its location is really good for that. That's just a thought. Um, I need to process more, obviously.
So the, the six fifty, um, students we showed at Drew, that does not include the, the lower level?
No.
Okay, so, so that's where the extra ones are. I just didn't know where the numbers were.
So with this site, with the, if we were to rebuild Drew on the same site, you said you could use the fields and stuff, would it have the same capacity?
Yeah, or. Yeah, we would get a normal, most of all, eleven hundred.
But, but then my question is, what are we gonna do with Heather M Field day school?
Yeah, so that would be, yeah, it's just listening to Dr. Chase. And, um, I think that's a good way to think about it is, okay, let's see, how would it work for, um, the early learning and the day school? You know, and so that would be a whole decision about Drew.
Right.
Um, where Drew would need to be built somewhere else. Um, if you said you wanted to build it on that site, I totally agree, the day school should go somewhere else. And maybe we would look at University of Mary Washington, or, but we need to, like, start going down one road or the other with the plan. And that's where we really need the feedback from you so that we, you know, create the proper plan.
And the problem with Mary Washington for a day school is it is not centrally located with respect to the county. I mean, those kids would be, kids in North Stafford having to get all the way over to, to, for the day school. That is just, you know.
And I, I guess the other thing, the thing about here is, um, you'll never please everybody with all these plans. So, you know, we've gotta come up with the best plan.
But I guess as long as we're keeping costs attached to possibility of timelines and programs, then we can just kinda prioritize from that.
The road back to Melchior taking through is bus traffic?
Yeah, it used to be a high school.
That's another good location.
Twenty, twenty-two bus traffic. Cause I've, you know, I've been back there for soccer and I'm like, I can't believe there's a school back here. I felt like, going like this under the trees.
It's not unusual for us to have to do road improvements. Like, when we built Mountain View, we actually had to put the traffic light in down at, um, Shelton Shop in Mountain View, in the, the high schools, you know, up the street.
Yeah.
And then a mountain.
Yeah.
Alright.
So are we done? We're early. Oh, good. I thought we were going till Tuesday this spring.
Oh.